All right, so Safana is going to join us later. I think it is, what time is it now?
Five oh one.
Five oh one, we can call to order and have a roll call for the February ninth Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and Court.
And the Concord Public Schools School Committee.
This meeting is being recorded and we can have a roll call, please. Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Oh, present.
Randy, present.
Mustafi, present.
Wilson, present.
Okay, and I move that the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and return to open session at six P M. Might I have a second?
I can for both.
For both, Cynthia, you can have it.
And my motion, yes, was for both. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
That I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Randy, I for both.
And Wilson for region.
Excellent, so we'll be back at six o'clock and we'll be heading off. Thank you. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Doing well, how about yourself?
Good, thank you, thank you. Sarah, I'll follow you.
Okay, welcome back to the public session of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and Concord School Committee Joint Meeting. But did, did Fatima, yes, so we'll do a roll call just to confirm who's here.
Very good, and roll call, please.
Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Present.
Ms. Stedt, present.
Mustafi, present.
Randy, present.
Wilson, present. So it is six oh one, we'll begin with, I'll just note again that we're being recorded. We will begin with public comment and as for people who are new here, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand using the participant button on the Zoom. Please present yourself, your name, your address. Please keep comments to a three minute maximum. And as a reminder, this is an open, we are in a meeting in the public but not with the public and so we tend not to respond to comments, but we look forward to listening to all of them. And if anyone has any comments, please raise your hand. Julie O'Brien.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, it took me a while to find the raised hand. Usually I'm monitor facilitating these Zoom calls. My name is Julie Barrett O'Brien, sixty seven MacArthur Road in Concord. I am the mother of a Concord Carlisle Regional High School junior and I'm here this evening to encourage the district and town to reevaluate and realign our fourteen day quarantine policy. And I speak to you as a mother, but I'm also a professional who worked in global health for fifteen years with an organization that dealt with everything from Ebola to SARS to, well, HIV, obviously. But I'm also currently leading a nonprofit that deals and operates at the nexus of youth mental health and digital overload. So I'm extremely aware of and work every day with particularly college kids who are overwhelmed and socially isolated and very depressed. So I feel like I have more than just my mom hat on here. I have a bit of professional background. First and foremost, I really want to commend the committee, Dr. Hunter, Mr. Mistrillo, Mr. Miller, Ms. Stahl, whom I've really enjoyed working with over the last three years with my son at C C and the teaching staff for their amazing and exceptional efforts during this unprecedented global pandemic and truly appreciate the frequent and transparent updates regarding the positive cases of COVID- nineteen in our school system and the steps being taken to trace and contain further spread of the deadly disease. I know this is nothing you all signed up for and we are grateful that you are keeping our children safe. A recent decision in which four C C H S students, including my son, were instantly quarantined for fourteen days because they made a very risky decision to carpool to Duncan without wearing a mask has magnified the need to reevaluate our school and town's quarantine policy so that it directly aligns with recommendations provided by the Center for Disease Control and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Yes, the boys should have been wearing their masks. The question is whether they need to quarantine for fourteen days, even if they all tested negative. I offer two points of consideration. First, the science does not support the town or school districts' policy. As per the roadmap to recovery, students in close contact with someone with COVID should quarantine for fourteen days. The U.S. Center for Seizec control and Mass Department of Public Health both offer options for stopping quarantine after ten days without testing and after seven days after receiving a negative test result, but that test result must happen on the fifth day. In the case I mentioned above, no one in the car at the time had tested positive for, showed symptoms of, or had been exposed to someone who had tested positive for COVID- nineteen and therefore, we believe, should not have been required to automatically quarantine for fourteen days. Neither one of these science-driven, evidence-based institutions recommends that students who have not been in close contact with someone who tested positive should be placed in quarantine for fourteen days, as in the case above. As a community that believes in science, we should be making decisions based on science. Second, the physical and social isolation that comes with quarantine can yield unintended consequences on the mental health and well-being of our children and we have seen this time and time again. Confining students like those noted above to a two-week life in quarantine away from their peers when it is not medically necessary is detrimental to their public, to their mental health and that is a National Institute of Health report and study itself. CDC studies indicate that we have an alarming increase in rates of teen suicide during the pandemic and we all know that depression and anxiety have escalated. Isolation and loneliness are key aspects of that depression and anxiety. In fact, a Cigna report in twenty nineteen determined that Gen Z was the loneliest generation in America and that was before COVID. The consequences of COVID- nineteen-related trauma and the impact of living in isolation through digital intermediaries without authentic human connection have yet to be fully understood. Despite this generation being born digital, and I know we've all encouraged our children to get off of technology, they are very eager for and need to nurture authentic friendships and human connections and there is lots of research on that as well. Our children are undeniably at wit's end, we all are. The hockey team, for example, is changing in sub-freezing temperatures outside rings before and after sweaty practice games. And if you've ever seen a hockey player get dressed, they have to get like completely undressed practically so they're down to bear nothings. Students learning remotely at home are barely rolling out of bed if they do and you can ask the teachers to quasi-learn through Zoom. And the coveted high school experience where adolescents learn valuable life lessons and emerge as young adults has been stripped away. We once again ask that you reconsider and realign the quarantine policy so that it puts the mental as well as the physical health of our community and students first. I do not want to underestimate the strain and complexity of the job that you are doing, all of you, during these unprecedented times, if not lost on us and I would not want to be in your shoes and we are not asking you to change the mask policy at all. We are a hundred percent behind that and acknowledge that. We're just simply asking for a reevaluation and a realignment of the fourteen day quarantine policy. I know people are saying, you could, it's only ten more days, it's only four more days. Four more days to a kid who is depressed is a lot. Four more days to a student.
Just one moment, just want to know you're at the five-minute mark, just.
Well, that's great, well, that's good.
I don't want to shut you down right now, I just want you to know we're at five.
Okay, well, I'm pretty done, but I do want to end on one note. And Dr. Hunter and I and Mr. Miller and Mr. Mistrillo, I mean, I have the utmost respect and we've had some great talks about the situation that we mentioned above and we am really grateful to some of the efforts being made and I'm here today not to reverse what happened then but to challenge you all to rethink this fourteen day policy because it is just, as it is, it's too much. It is too much for these kids and it's not aligned with the national standards. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
No worries.
I'm time keeper tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Benjamin.
Hello, hi, everyone. Pardon me. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to take a moment and follow up on a previous question that I had asked the committee at, I believe it was last week's meeting. Particularly, I'd like to understand some of the challenges that the committee sees in getting our children back to school in person full-time now. I'd like to understand it from your perspective, from the administration's perspective. And I'd also like to understand what are some of the action items that are being taken to get our children back in school full-time and in person now. The last thing that I would say is I'm a little confused by Ms. Wilson's comments that there isn't an answer for any of the questions that we pose. That's, to be frank, that's a new one on me. I, in my experience in being on committees and being with the town in elected positions, when public comments are presented, there is a back and forth discourse. So I would appreciate some answers to those two questions. A, what are some of the challenges that the administration and the school committee sees to getting our students back in school in person full-time? And what are some of the action items that are being taken to get those students back in school in person full-time now? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you both for your comments and I will just reiterate that it is standard practice that we are having a meeting in the open but not with, you know, within the public but not with the public. We take into consideration all viewpoints shared and appreciate everybody's comments and thoughtfulness and I know that we all love this community and we all have very strong opinions and thank you.
So to follow up then, when or when and in what manner would responses to my questions be provided?
I think I could weigh in here, Sarah, and say as the Chair of the Concord School Committee, Ms. Wilson is Chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee. She and I will be developing the agenda for the, bear with me for a moment, February twenty-third agenda in the very, very near future. And we will take your request into consideration. We'll also be dialoguing with the superintendent as we routinely do to prepare for that.
Okay, thank you.
John Madden.
Hi, everybody. So yeah, my name is John Madden. I live at thirteen ninety-four Main Street in Concord and I have two young children, ages three and six. And my question was, why does the elementary school and classes for children in the lowest risk categories, age below eight through ten, continue to remain on a half-day at school when there is no science to support this exclusion and the risk to teachers of contracting COVID is less than that of a grocery store worker, a trash collector, administrative clerk, and other jobs within the community who never refuse to return to work throughout the pandemic? And what is it that's so risky to these teachers compared to, say, a doctor or a nurse? When teachers can't actually socially distance, they're not dealing with fluids, contaminated aerosol and issues like that. It's not a high-risk job. And my second point was, you know, I was disappointed last week with the remote learning being canceled. There wasn't a valid reason for that. That was on Tuesday, the second. There was a snowstorm on Sunday night, continuing until eight A.M. on Monday morning and the snow got cleared on Monday, but I wonder why there was no remote learning for students on Tuesday. How did that get affected?
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
I think if, I don't see any new raised hands. I think Court, then we can move to the reading of the minutes.
All right, I want to thank our public participants now that our next meeting is, as I noted, February twenty-three. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December twenty-two, twenty twenty, and January fifth, twenty twenty-one, please.
They moved for both committees.
And I will record that as Heather's motion, Ms. Rainey. About a second. Those in favor, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
That I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Ms. Stedt, I for both. Randy, I for both.
Wilson for region. Thank you. Chairs and liaisons report and student update. I see that Linda and Amy are both here. Court, should we let them?
Yeah, if you'd be so kind, Amy and Linda, we'd like you to share with us what you wish and give us a chance to dialogue with you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, so something's happening right now with moot court just started. I'm doing that and that's started last week and the first cases are happening a week after we get back from break. That's like the mock Supreme Court we do at the school. And then the radio play that we're going to be doing at the end of the winter is also starting right after break. We're holding auditions right after we get back, like just that Monday. And other than that, not much's happening, just I think everyone's really excited for break right now and excited to kind of like get a lot of snow coming in and kind of feel more wintery than we've been feeling for the past couple months. So that's something.
And in addition, this is another, this is a little small statistic, speaking from myself. I started a new study method where you work for twenty-five minutes and then rest for five. And with that, I've been able to time how long it takes me to do my homework. And so the past week, just for the past five days, because I also had homework to do on a snow day, it took me about four to five hours each day on average. And take that as you will, I'm a high school senior, I do take three A.P. classes and I also take Calma and Amy can attest to this because she took it last year. Calma is named definitely the hardest sociology class because it is a really rigorous course with some really good course load and material to cover. So not sure if, just wanted to bring that statistic out there, not sure if it's like that important, but.
So do you have a Pomodoro timer at your house, Linda?
Oh, I have one on Google. I didn't realize that anyone would know the name of it. I should have just called it.
Great, okay, thank you. And tell us generally, we know that you are two representatives. Now speak for the entire student body. Everybody's eager to get to winter break. What else? Is the spirit strong? Are students doing okay, would you say? I know, I know that's a gross, big generality, but what do you think?
I think that getting the stretch from December break to February break feels very long and like not, I think a lot of people don't even know that the February break is next week yet because people don't want to talk about it that much. So it kind of feels like you're kind of in that long stretch of like the middle of the winter. People have been missing school a lot because of virtual days and snow days. So it kind of is kind of a little bit down, but I think like around like Fridays when things usually turn around. Like, oh yeah, we don't, we're not coming to school for another week.
Yeah, and I think people were definitely really excited about that snow day. It is a little sad knowing that it's probably our last snow day ever, but you know, it was just nice to have it anyways.
I think it was like normal, like it feels normal too, like being able to kind of like feel like back to normalcy. Having a snow day definitely brought that back a bit.
Yeah, I have to say, my college kids had kids, the classes canceled last week too, girls, so maybe.
Yeah, my dad teaches and he, and he had all his classes canceled too. He just fully virtually, wasn't sure why they were canceled, but they were all canceled too.
Yeah, and I think for Amy and I, as for how the school is feeling. So Amy and I are both second semester seniors and there's always the whole talk about senioritis and pretty soon, you know, we'll be seniors who also, where everyone knows where they're going to college and that's so exciting. And I mean, I think a lot of us have the assumption that prom's not happening. We don't even know what our graduation is going to look like, so.
Yeah, I think that's definitely, I think for us, that's a bit of a, I think for seniors, it's a bit of a downer still, like just knowing our second semester senior is not going to be what it usually is. But I think we know like there's not much we can do about that, so that's a little bit. But like I think we're still kind of like, oh yeah, we've all applied to college or gotten into college, but we're just not going to get like the end of our senior year that we were supposed to get.
Yeah.
We're working on some plans, though. Don't.
Okay.
Don't come up on all of it. It might be different, but we're working on it.
Yes.
Don't worry, I feel like a lot of us are setting the bar low, like this.
We're going to pleasantly surprise you with anything, Linda.
Keep it nice and low so we can really impress you.
What do they say sometimes, Amy and Linda, under-promise and over-deliver?
Right.
Maybe that will happen for us all, yeah. Well, I know I speak for my colleagues and all of your teachers and staff that support you as well as the leadership team that you and I work with. When I say, have a very safe vacation and enjoy, you deserve it.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you for coming. Great. Do we have other chairs and liaisons reports?
I'll move into liaison territory with Heather and say that the middle school building, moving to the Concord side, the middle school building committee is meeting this Thursday, seven thirty A.M. That's publicly posted on the Concord website and there's a link, of course, through the school website.
And to add to that, you can say you heard it here first because the flyer that was just finalized has not gone out yet, but we're about to announce that we're going to have our next community forum on the middle school, February twenty-fourth at seven P.M. So watch for all the news flashes. We'll be sending that out through the schools and throughout the town as much as possible. That's the news hottest off the press. And just in terms of the communications and outreach of the building committee, we're also meeting with a lot of smaller groups, very often in their own space, so to speak, on their own Zooms. We sent a message out to every town committee chair in Concord and to many other groups offering to join their meetings to give updates and answer questions and take feedback and everything. So we're setting up a lot of different, basically, listening sessions with different groups in town so that we can really make sure we're getting broad input in this process here.
The schools and the administration have been attending and in communication with the Concord Finance Advisory Committee. So if it's not already evident, we're certainly paying attention to their deliberations and their guidance and recommendations.
Yep, and one of them last week, if anybody follows the League of Women Voters, they always do a First Friday event and we were the guest of honor there and had a great discussion with League of Women Voters members as well as other groups, but that was a, that was a great example of a good community collaborative event. And there will be many more happening. We'll keep you posted.
Other liaison reports, please.
I'll just add a quick shout-out to all of our maintenance crews and building service crews who got us back into school after the storms, Monday even, and who were out there, I know, shoveling and clearing, I'm sure during the Super Bowl when we were all cozy in our homes. So I just wanted to send a big thanks out to all the teams who are out there getting us back in on Monday.
Some of them are busy as we speak.
I was going to say, they're back at it, right?
Exactly.
Ready for tomorrow.
Right now, and the work they'll probably do on Friday again.
Speaking of snow days.
Right, exactly.
That one's going to the south, I heard. That's what I'm hoping.
Sarah, could we move to correspondence?
Correspondence, yes. So we had some correspondence about leveled math in middle school and high school and we had correspondence about math. We have consulted with the school officials on these topics. We feel we are very well-informed on them and that the administration is handling these relationships.
We've had another correspondence following up on matters related to the Safe Roots to School Program, a state program that promotes bicycling and non-car transportation. And I think that was it for me, Sarah.
Great, so I think we can move into our discussion on the overview of professional development and cultural competency. I think Kristin taking the lead here. Yeah, I just need someone to share the screen with me so I can, or make me host so I can share my screen. And I'm just going to note that Dr. Paula Martin and Andrew Nocci are here as well and we, as always, are glad to have you all three with us, for anyone who is new. Good. So can you see it? Can you see my screen? Yep, great, all right. So Andrew is going to kick us off this evening.
Should I unmute myself? All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Nocci and I'm the medical director for Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Regional School District. I am joined this evening by my esteemed colleagues, Kristin Herbert, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Paula Martin, our district's edco, ideas, cultural competency consultant. First and foremost, thank you to the members of the school committee and Dr. Hunter for having us this evening to present to you an update on our professional development efforts for faculty as it relates to our district's ongoing commitment to cultural competency and anti-racist education. Next slide, please. As we have shared in previous presentations, our work is grounded by our pre-K through twelve Cultural Competency and Anti-Racist Steering Committee with a mission statement that was drafted during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Our mission is as follows. We strive to be a more culturally competent community. We support our diversity of race, gender, religion, national origin, gender identity, color, ancestry, sexual orientation, and ability. By our choices and actions, we promote all members to feel recognized, respected, and valued. We have set our intention to be responsive, proactive, and empathetic to all facets of culture and diversity. The goal of continuously developing our cultural competency is that it will enable our students to develop the values, skills, and behaviors needed to effectively interact in a culturally diverse community, both locally and globally. With Dr. Hunter's vision for our school district, we have a strategic plan with four objectives. The first one, which is not noted on this slide, but I'll still cover it. The first one being employing teachers to offer multiple paths to success. The second one being ensuring student achievement through student well-being. The fourth pillar is creating an innovative environment that catalyzes student learning through safe, healthy, and innovative indoor and outdoor spaces. And lastly, our third pillar, which is noted here on the slide, is inclusive culture. And our goal here is to create a collaborative and inclusive culture in the schools and community that values diversity. that values diversity and recognizes the contributions and uniqueness of each learner. So under our strategic objective on inclusive culture are five, uh, strategic initiatives. Uh, these initiatives have been presented before the school committee, um, over the course of the school year. Uh, Strategic Initiative three point one, uh, as you see there was, uh, a presentation we had back in August twenty twenty. Uh, Strategic Initiative three point two is what we are presenting on today, uh, related to professional development. Initiative three point three, uh, was an update we gave back in December of twenty twenty, uh, regarding, uh, culturally responsive curriculum. Initiative three point four, uh, we had a presentation just a couple of weeks ago back in January on hiring, uh, and mentoring and retaining a diverse, uh, staff. And Initiative three point five, uh, we gave an update, uh, back in November uh, regarding ways to, uh, engage students as well as students who, um, are in our community via the Metco program.
Thanks, Andrew. So, um, we have a robust professional development program for all of our faculty, including our professional teachers, social workers, guidance counselors, and all of our tutors. Um, and we, uh, rival that of districts that are much, much larger than us by all of our, um, all of our offerings. Um, so we have, uh, sort of two sets of ways that we deliver professional development, uh, along with our, um, professional development beliefs, what, what makes sense, what helps adults grow in their understanding and their learning and then their, for their ability to serve children. So the first set um, of workshops that we have for teachers are workshops that all teachers go to and all tutors go to. Um, and they're really meant to inspire, to have folks dig in and do the tough work.
Thank you, Kristen. So our professional development journey, uh, began in, um, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, uh, when we secured, uh, three empowering speakers, uh, during our opening day, uh, for all staff. Uh, the following speakers, Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum, Principal Beruti Caffele, and Dr. Derek Gay, uh, brought messages of culturally responsive practices that we can implement in our schools.
Thank you, Andrew. During the fall training days leading up to the twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one school year, the faculty in each of the buildings had a cultural, culturally competency workshop with myself, Kristen Herbert, and Andrew. Not only was it a workshop, if you see at the bottom, um, it was a what are you going to do? It's a call to action. So a- at the end of that workshop, we asked every faculty member present, what anti-racist cultural competency actions are you committing to for your own personal growth? And then the same question we asked, what are you committing to for your students? And every faculty member had an opportunity, uh, through a live document to, to type in. And using just initials, uh, JD, I will read unconscious bias in schools, a development or approach to exploring racial race and racism by Benson and Fearman. Um, and also said, I will, uh, complete an adult audit of my classroom literacy library to make sure that every child sees themselves reflected in authors and titles offered. We also had several workshops that, um, benefited teachers during faculty meetings, during monthly faculty meetings. Um, in particular, I was at, um, Willard and the Middle School. Uh, the principals reached out and we were able to do um, a couple of workshops related around unconscious bias or how to have difficult conversations. Um, again, a call to action, creating community. Uh, it's necessary to involve and consider the faculty, um, in this work that we do.
So that was the workshops that are offered for all faculty. At the same time, there's sort of the mandatory times, um, where the richness comes for our faculty is in the choice. So there were over sixty-five workshops or courses or groups, uh, serving four hundred and seventy-one educators over the last three years. So I just want to say that again, because we're a three thousand kids school district. Uh, so sixty-five workshops, courses, and groups for our educators. Um, to, just to give you a sense, uh, when I worked in a much bigger school district, Brookline, uh, there wasn't even half of this offered. So a lot of great things, a lot of teachers, uh, really learning and growing. So these workshops are choice, they're, uh, part of our belief around, uh, adult growth, which is that if people get to choose what they're going to, they're actually gonna learn more because they feel like they have more agency. Um, and they know where they are in their development and career. Um, so these workshops are, are to, for the depth. So we want to heighten awareness around particulars, we want to build understanding, and we want to develop teachers' skills. So an example of these, uh, choice workshops are the professional development paths that we have. This is, we're currently in our second year of offering them. Um, they are three afternoons over the course of the school year, so one of the great pieces about the paths is that we actually make, it's literally the only time over the course of the year when our preschool to grade twelve faculty are mixed together and they can share ideas with each other and get to know each other, um, in smaller group settings. So, uh, these were the professional development paths in the nineteen twenties school year. Um, and as you can see, many of them focused on cultural competency, um, and, uh, special education and so forth. So, uh, Dr. Martin, Andrew, myself, we've been leading some of these for years. Um, so we're really excited to have them and they went so well that we now have them again this year. Um, so again, we had, um, a lot of offerings on cultural competency, one, um, Path D was led by Dr. Martin and myself about, uh, creating a more culturally competent curriculum. This was a workshop model, so P- teachers brought a piece of their curriculum to work on and focus on with some resources that we gave them. Um, another one, Path E, Unconscious Bias in Schools, um, Andrew was there to help facilitate uh, a discussion with Dr. Tracy Benson, who was the author of, uh, the book Unconscious Bias in Schools. Um, and that was the picture you saw on our opening slide with all the teachers holding up all their books. So for all of these professional development paths, part of the power is that any book or, uh, supplies they needed to do the work was provided for them. So within, um, Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle High School, we have lots of other offerings that teachers can take for free, for no cost to themselves. Uh, so we have summer professional development, how to have different, difficult conversations about race, um, broken down by elementary school and middle school. Um, there were discussions of books and readings, uh, at the high school. Um, we worked really, um, diligently at our ninth grade um, to work on culturally competent curriculum. Um, Willard School, uh, CMS, Alcott School all had their own book groups going where they selected a book, we purchased it for them and, um, they had a facilitated conversation around it. So you can see, um, a lot of going on, uh, around the district. Uh, and then I'll just also lastly highlight, we have a series of classes taught over the course of the year. It's about one a month um, called Concord Fellows, and these are courses that are taught by our educators for our educators. Um, so that's a really nice place for, uh, teachers to, um, meet each other from across the different schools and grow together.
I'm, uh, very excited about this series. Uh, this, we're in our second year, two years ago was approached, uh, what can we do for the adults, for the community? Um, you know, we hear the work that's happening with teachers, uh, around cultural competency, we hear the work that's um, happening with, with, with students. Um, as a as a end goal here, we created a, a series called Can We Talk? Um, it's a five series, uh, workshop format. Uh, the first year was in person, the second year has been on Zoom. Um, members of the Concord Carlisle Community signs up for this series. Um, and through that, they are entitled to all five workshops. There is a morning and an evening session. Um, taught by the same, uh, led by the same workshop leader. Uh, but the topics that are covered are unconscious bias, again, how to have difficult conversations, uh, media, cultural appropriation, uh, gender, L, uh, LGBTQ, and, um, let me think, there's one more, uh, native spirit, uh. These are offered, again, throughout the year, from the fall and the last one ends in June. Uh, what excites me the most about this series is it connects community with the school, with students. So many participants said, I like this because I can talk with my children. Or I understand when they come home and talk about, you know, anti-racism or cultural comp, I'm understanding what that means. I had a lot of grandparents, which was fabulous, and they said, you know, when I came up, we didn't, we didn't talk about this. And we want to talk about it now. We want to understand what all of this really means. Um, so we have had, uh, the second one was in February and there are still two more uh, workshops in the series to go, ending in June, where, um, I come in and I wrap it all together. It's like, can we talk? These workshops are also led by other EMI, um, ideas instructors um, who have an expertise in each of those topics.
So not only do we offer classes for all teachers and tutors and staff members um, within Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle High School, but we also are partners with other organizations that offer classes. Uh, this is especially important in a small district like ourselves where, um, you know, as the leader of professional development for Concord, um, you worry about the folks who are in very small jobalite groups. So for example, you know, you have ten, maybe eleven teachers of physical education, so, uh, or you have twelve, thirteen counselors that work across the district. So, um, a lot of times we want to go outside to learn best practices, especially when we're in our small jobalite groups. Um, so you can see one of the, uh, examples of a workshop that, uh, some of our librarians went to. Um, at the bottom of your screen is, uh, Diversity Practitioner for School Librarians. Again, we only have five school librarians, um, so it's good to, um, go outside. So, um, these are all of the, um, it, most of the, uh, courses that folks took from the outside. Um, and, uh, for most of these, we are, um, members of a group, so we pay, um, uh, a fee to be a member of, uh, Edco, which is where the Ideas, um, group is housed that Paula works for, um, and with. Uh, and we're also a member of Primary Source, which is, um, predominantly for social studies, but they do some work in, um, cultural competency and equity. Um, and both groups, the work is at the very highest level, so we're excited to always, uh, partner with them uh, in this professional development and in all the professional development that they offer.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Jamila Pitts, a former teacher, Assistant Principal, and now an educational consultant and Equity and Justice Strategist for the Teach and Tolerance Organization says, anti-racist work in all schools is essential. It is the exercise of hope, the practice of undoing and dismantling systems of oppression, the practice of freedom and of truth-telling. In order to be truly anti-racist, we must consider all a- all aspects of schooling, not just having this work belong in the classroom, it has to belong to everyone. Uh, here on this slide, you will note, uh, some groups that are supporting our district's effort and taking a holistic approach, uh, towards anti-racist education and ensuring that this work, again, uh, involves everyone, not just, uh, students, um, but also involving teachers and our community. Our pre-K through twelve Cultural Competency and Anti-Racism, uh, Racism Steering Committee, as you have heard in past presentations, uh, supports our district's initiatives on hiring, uh, mentoring and retention of educators of color, uh, the inclusion of diverse voices in our curriculum. And of course, the committee has been instrumental at designing and implementing some of our professional development uh, opportunities that you have heard, uh, here tonight. Our CMS Allies Group, uh, is a professional learning community, uh, group that is led by Sita, uh, DeRusola and Sarah Bolwinkle. Uh, the group engages, uh, in activism uh, by advocating for marginalized student groups, uh, in the middle school, uh, community. The Allies Group, uh, provides a space to talk about anti-racism and provides guidelines for teachers to have difficult conversations. There is also a strong focus on improving the racial climate at, uh, Concord Middle School for staff and students. The Concord Carlisle High School Anti-Racism Group for Educators, also known as CHARGE, is another, uh, professional learning community, uh, group that is working to increase understanding of identity, issues of equity and inclusion, uh, particularly as, uh, it is applied to the Concord Carlisle High School community. There are a number of faculty, uh, members and staff involved in CHARGE um, as participants, and they are, uh, they, they are provided a, uh, with a foundation of understanding identity, implicit and unconscious bias, uh, stru- and structural racism through an hour-long, uh, meetings, uh, which usually occur, uh, in the afternoon. CHARGE is led by Caitlin, uh, Smith, Patty Worth, um, Nora Murphy, and Dr. David Nuremberg. Our next group core, uh, which stands for Communities Organizing Against Racism, as led by Erin Fife, is a parent, teacher, and community group committed to racial equity and social justice. This is a growing group of Concord, Carlisle, Boston community members who are deeply invested in anti-racism work personally and as a community. Together, they are learning to uncover their own understanding around race and racism. Our pre-K through twelve Literature Review Committee is fairly new, uh, this year, uh, organized by Kristen Herbert is a twelve-member committee, uh, tasked to review our K through twelve literature choices and look for balance in our core texts, ensuring inclusion, inclusion of diverse voices in our texts and work to create a process for vetting those texts. Lastly, our, our Concord Carlisle High School Anti-Racist Curriculum Review Committee, also fairly new, uh, is led by Joanna Glazer and a group of teachers, uh, from literally every department at CC, uh, who are examining what we currently teach at the high school and looking at and, and looking for opportunities to embed an anti-racist, anti-oppressive lens in our curriculum at the high school. Uh, the group has had, uh, some good discussions already, uh, within and, uh, between departments, but of course, uh, the work is only just getting started. That is all.
So I hope you've enjoyed the presentation. I think the big takeaway that I would love for you to have is, um, as a small district with roughly five hundred professional staff, we have almost everyone included in the work of anti-racism and cultural competency. And, um, that momentum has built over the last five years. Uh, I'm really, really excited. I know that we're making a difference, uh, and that we will. I know that we're making a difference and that we will continue. And as I've said in multiple settings, but since this is our last meeting, planned meeting on this topic of cultural competency, it's going to take a long time for us to make a dent. And we are very, very committed for the long haul. And I think it's going to take more than just, you know, the three of us or the four of us individually, but you can see that there are 500 educators working on this very, very hard. So questions, comments?
Thank you. I think it's, it's worth noting that the district has been working on cultural competency, at least from the eighties, from, from, from what I know, but it's really impressive to see. And I think imagine this year too, like the amount of offerings, the reach of possibilities of, of training, of resources has really expanded. And Sarah, I think, you know, in this process of this hope, this freedom, this truth telling, this dismantling as we build stronger, I guess, and, and move to what shall be, then I think, I feel that we have a lot of supports within the community, obviously, and without. And so it's wonderful to see you guys really capitalizing on all of that.
Yeah.
I'd love to comment just on the amount of, I don't even want to call it buy-in because it's not like people have had to have been sold, but the initiative that's being shown on so many people's part here, you guys have been an amazing leadership team on this initiative. The way you talk about all of those courses and how many people served and the fact that it is choice based and optional. It just makes me feel very happy to see how many people, staff, teachers are so deeply engaged in this conversation like we are, it's so important to us. And it feels really good to see that it's so important to so many people out there. And I think that's why we're making such good progress. And that's why this feels so good and so right and, and why it is moving along so well. And like we've said many times before, this isn't something that you can check off and be done with. We will continue to work on all of this. But it really feels this year like we're doing really good work and making even more progress than we have wrapped before.
Yeah. And looking at professional growth, you know, and trying to sort of change a culture, we look at sort of three phases. You have your pioneers who try things out, they take courses other places, they may come together in a small group. Then you have sort of the bulk of your people looking at those pioneers, making sure, okay, is that going to work? Am I going to be successful if I try it? Oh, look, they're doing it. Okay, it's okay. And, and then you have your, you know, your few folks at the back may be more resistant, taking a little more time. And I would say we are fully in, everybody's doing it, everybody's trying it. It is the way that we're operating now.
And that's a big tipping point to pass. It's the hardest to get to that really critical mouth there. So well done.
Kristin, I agree with Heather, like it, this, when you see like those numbers of people and the breadth of the offerings, it, tonight is like the first night for me where it really clicked and it felt like this is actually really authentic. You know what I mean? Like, like you can offer these things and whatnot, but this is, I don't know, tonight it kind of clicked for me seeing how much, as Heather called it buy-in, you know, whatever word you want to tack onto it, but there really is authentic interest and commitment to this in a way that tonight was very evident and visible. I have a question for you. Those, the slides about the paths, are they really like, so it looks like there were three, there's three professional development dates. So on those dates, is it basically just, the word path is just sort of confusing me, is it basically just on those three dates, those are the offerings you can select? And no, I don't, can you explain it?
So you choose one path?
Yeah.
Go to for all three?
All three, it's like sort of like a little seminar that got it. Okay.
Importantly, you know, that's a big learning on adult learning, which is that it's, it has to be more than a one shot deal and you need to be with a group of people that's constant to, to make that change in people's behavior and attitudes. So that, you know, the timing of it with about a month or six weeks in between the three sessions each time is, is really important for people's growth because, because then it never leaves the, the front burner in terms of choice. But you know, just to comment on your earlier comment, as the person who's like signing everybody up for all these courses and everything, I mean, I kind of knew, but it wasn't until you, you all asked me to do this presentation, that I had to search our database of signups. And I was like, is this true? 65 courses? We, 471 people have signed up for them? How can this possibly be knowing that there's like 500? So I kept going back to this. So, so thank you for asking us for the presentation.
So great.
Another question that might be repetitive because we've said it before, but of course we all have debated, you know, what, what is our role in this and what can it be? And I think a lot of it is this, it's understanding it so that we can support you. And of course, you know, we, we have budget responsibility and there's always the muddy bags that can support things when, when needed. But other than that, I would put it out there and there might not be answers today, but the question is ongoing, how can we further support you? And so I think, I think I can speak for everyone here because everybody has said similar things before, we do strongly want to support this. And so please keep us posted. If you have ideas and thoughts and things that we're not doing that you think we should be, please let us know how we can help if it's more than what we're doing now.
Yeah, I can say three things and then, you know, please, my colleagues join me. The first is to have a strategic plan that includes this work as very clearly what, where we're moving forward with the district. You know, that is something we can stand behind and make sure the work happens. So that, that is a very public statement of your support. The second is pretty obvious, but I'll say it in times that are tough not to cut professional development when we have to cut the budget, because that is how you make change. So, you know, when we can get teachers, a calendar where teachers have the opportunity to have good, solid time with their colleagues, with professionals that can lead them in good conversations and activities, that's how we make progress. So I know, you know, if you look at the numbers for professional development, it sometimes feels like that's might be a good place to cut. And, and, and we have cut over the years and we just always want to make sure that we're not cutting over multiple years. So you can kind of take, take a hit for one year, but taking a hit for three years is, is, you know, you're, you would see the death of an initiative that way. And then the last one is, you know, I think questions come up from individuals on this work. And it takes a lot of courage on the part of teachers and administrators to move forward. So knowing that we have your full support in doing this work empowers us to be able to do it. And I would say thank you for that because it sort of feels like the pinnacle of my professional career to, to make this change in a very special district. So thank you.
Great. That's wonderful. Well, I think the stated support is easy. And you know, the, the professional, specifically pointing out professional development, I think is very helpful. Obviously, we're in budget season and we, and none of us were clamoring to cut professional development by any, but, but to tie it that specifically and for us to be able to tie our stated values and priorities to the tasks that we have to accomplish, like, like approving a budget is really important because we can look at that budget and say, this really supports our priorities because we have strong support for professional development in it. And that's a really helpful tie. So thank you.
I'd love to put a tough one your way if I could. We've discussed unconscious bias. We're a teaching and learning institution. We've got to have some tolerance for experimentation and mistakes, frankly. My unconscious bias may not be evident until I offend somebody, until I make a mistake. And I'm not convinced we are highly tolerant of mistakes that, that harm people. So how do we leverage mistakes in our, in our institution in a way that doesn't add to the harm that's already happened when, when, when we make a blunder because we're not aware? And then we realize that we've got some attitude and ability issues around understanding differences.
Corey, I think if, if I could, one strategy is just what you said. The acknowledgement that I've made this blunder, I, I said this and did this. I wasn't even aware that I, I had this, you know, bump in me and I'm aware now. Number one, you apologize. You know, I, I am sorry that I said or I did that made you uncomfortable because you see the apology is not about us, it's about how that other person is, feels. And three, to really then seek out other individuals, our allies, or someone that you can talk to to say, this is what I did. You know, I, I, I think I need to, maybe, maybe I need to take a course, maybe I need to have further conversation. Everyone is going to make a mistake. And what you do after that is the sign of growth. You can't continue to go through and say, I'm not going to say anything because I might say the wrong thing. Yes, I might say the wrong thing, but it won't be unintentional. And so naming it, acknowledging it, asking forgiveness, and then seeing what you can do to examine, is there something else in me that I'm not aware of? There was this. And we all have them. That's, that's the, that's the piece. So acknowledging that is, is, is the first step. Yeah, sure, you can take a course and that dialogue is going to help or workshop may help to uncover even more things. Cause it, you know, it's like this backpack, what I call it is what's in your backpack? We don't know what's in there because all of our life, messages that have been caught and messages that have been taught have been stuck in there. And our parents raised us with good intentions and guardians. However, it wasn't, what they raised us with then is not suitable for now. So that we really have to look at what we're carrying and acknowledge it and say, all right, now that I know that, what can I do to make sure this doesn't happen again?
So that makes sense. That's helpful. What, what that leads to for me is a hope or an expectation that, that the experts among us will teach us how to, how do I say this? Call us out on the mistakes in a way that isn't shaming. Because to be called out can be instructive or it can be shaming. And that's a pretty nuanced kind of thing there. So I, I hope we're, we're teaching and learning the business of helping others be self-aware in such a way that they don't, they're not shamed, they're not embarrassed, they don't have to hide. Because that's not a good learning space. You know it, I know it. So.
Well, one of the, one of our guidelines in ideas is when we set guidelines up whenever we teach a course and it, and it says, there'll, there's no shaming, there's no blaming. We, we, we own and we own what it is, you know, that we have. So yes, I agree. It's working through that.
Thank you. Quick, one more quick question. Kristin, maybe this goes to you. If as a teacher, I do some PD and I express some commitments around my, my learning goals, will that enter into any of my, where I teach, into any of my professional goals that others are aware of? So I've got that observer effect going on and maybe even a coach?
Yep. So we have a system of supervision and evaluation. There are four standards that all teachers need to meet and they're evaluated on them every year. And being more culturally competent is part of that. It is in two of the standards. So the second standard is reaching all students. And so that is something that is assessed by evaluators, mostly the principals and assistant principals at the CPS and at CCHS, it's the department chairs. And so that's the, the student part of it. And then the family part of it, communicating with families in a culturally proficient way is actually part of standard three. And so those goals are made public. Similarly, all educators every year set two goals. One is for student learning and one is for their own professional growth. And we have a lot of our educators choosing to become more culturally competent or to make their curriculum more culturally competent for student growth as part of their goals. So those goals are, are public and we can give coaches as part of it. And suggest through the supervision and evaluation process of meetings, suggest people take courses, we've offered mentors. So yeah, we've done a lot of support for that, but it is sort of systemically something that we gather support and then we actually report to the state about where, where our supervision and evaluation is. So yeah, it's, it's tracked very systematically.
Thank you.
If I may, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the process that the group has taken in bringing the, the work done on cultural competency, starting with listening to the students, because the, the purpose of, of all the work that is done is really to benefit the students. So I really appreciate the course that this conversation has taken. You have, Kristin, you have already answered one of my questions, which was about the metrics. I have two follow-up questions. One is, how do we, how is the professional training continued for onboarding of new teachers? What's the process there? And also, can we talk that program that is based in a, that is based in community? In the past, I heard that some Concord High School teachers would give students that participated in those kind of programs credit. Is that, is that still continuing?
Yeah. So I'm happy to answer the first part of that and then maybe let Dr. Martin answer about the Can We Talk series. But the first part is about new staff, I think, and how we acclimatize them, that this is the work that we're doing. So even as part of the, it's there from the very first day that they apply because of course, it's our part of our strategic initiatives. So when candidates come for their interview, we have a set of interview questions that we ask all, all the same candidates interviewing for the same job. And there is always some question in there around cultural competency. It depends, you know, what grade level they're working with or what subject area, but there's something about that because all of our questions are based off of our rubric for supervision and evaluation. So we're always asking about it. And so right from the beginning, they know it's important. And then as they're being hired, they have conversations with the department chair, the principal, and Dr. Hunter is always the last stop. And she talks about it in those interviews as well. And then when new staff start, they come to a two day orientation, usually at Ripley. And we orient them to the strategic initiatives within the district. So we talk a lot with our new folks about how we're doing the work and that they can take professional development and so forth. But they're sort of entering into a conversation that's been going on for a number of years. So I, I would say they're very well aware. And sort of the last piece of it is, as we reported to on earlier, we've been hiring more faculty of color. So that room that I work with of new staff over the last eight years has become increasingly diverse. So you can literally see the, the fruits of the labor and you can look around and know. Um, and you can look around and know that um we're walking the talk, that we're trying to do this. So and um, Dr. Martin, can you answer the question about Can We Talk?
Uh, could you restate that for me, please?
Uh, so I heard, yes, thank you. I heard that in the past, uh, uh, some uh, some of the CCHS uh teachers would um offer credit to the students that participated in uh in that series. Uh, uh, do you see participations or interest coming from students as well as the community members? Um, do you know?
Yes, I've um, in some, in a couple of my workshops, I have seen students, high school students, and I've had some teachers uh who've also taken the course, taken that series. Um, and I believe there was some um professional development credit offered to the teachers. Uh, so yes, there have been uh students who have, you know, reached out and workshops were held at the high school, so that was also kind of convenient.
But I think you had administrators there too.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Some administrators, and it enriched the conversation. Because with a student there and a community and a faculty person, the community, the the conversations were enriching, they were exciting, um, and appreciated. With all of this work, dialogue is what matters. If we can talk about it, we can begin to make a difference and we can begin to do differently. Did I answer? Okay.
I'll go. Um, thank you so much for all the work that you've done and the presentation you brought to us. And um, I continue to be encouraged, I continue to be excited about this work. And it is, it is an enormous undertaking in addition to everything that you have to do, especially this year. Uh, so I'm very, very appreciative um of that. I had um, and I'm all gap of questions, comments, and answers, but they all, they are tied together. And I'm going to start from um where we just stopped, the Can We Talk, right? So and it also ties in with the way that we, the school committee, can support you. And what does that support look like? So I want to talk about how I see that support. And um, I would like also to ensure that it's um it's understood. So the Can We Talk, I want to focus on the we, right? Who is the we? Uh, so that was a very example, a very good example of the the programs that happened at the high school that involved students and parents and educators. That is the kind of conversations and dialogues that uh that we need. Um, the programs that are offered at the Adult and uh Continuumic Education are also wonderful, I have attended um some of them. I wonder if they are as effective as um they, if if they were happening directly in with our school, with our parent communities, for instance, right? Um, we're talking about um what what's happening at schools. And this, this is almost, you know, it's part of the district and it's it's a little bit separate. Um, so I would like us to e- engage in that, um, in 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 the definition of of that we. And also, but difficult conversations. When you mentioned, uh, Kristen, when we introduce difficult topics and difficult conversations and in your training, all of all of you, um, you have encountered this difficult conversation and you have skills and you're teaching skills on how to um navigate and have these conversations and reach uh the desire and outcome. So when we're introducing difficult topics that families or parts of the community are having trouble with, um, I am wondering where whether we could apply the same principles or the same strategies to those conversations. My concern, my worry is um whether any, uh, I know we're not going to have a hundred percent satisfaction when we're talking about these topics. My concern is to ha- to be, uh, to exclude. Uh, we have a lot of educating to do if if a a community member is uncomfortable or uh feels not accepting of a topic that's been introduced, for instance, or perspective. Um, how can we engage them in those difficult conversations so that we don't arrive to a point where they become the other or where the district needs to be protected against this other intervention? I would like us to be in the context where we're having those conversations, they are difficult, and nobody feels the need to be protected from the other. Uh, so that's the point that I want to make sure that is understood. Again, just like when we talk about IEP, for instance, right, implementing an IEP, you could waive the IEP as a legal document in the face of a teacher, or you could have the buy-in and um were uh the best ways to educate a special needs uh child, student. So that's uh what um I would like to um to engage the three of you um with. And there's another question actually that also ties um into that. And that's a question I have for uh Dr. Martin, but um Andrew and Kristen, uh, you may have the answers as well. Uh, so in the same theme, um, I know we talked about uh having um completing an equity audit, and we're taking our time because we want to do it right. In the absence of the equity audit, Dr. Martin, what informs your curriculum for professional development in terms of the needs of our community? Right, um, how, um, yes, what informs the the choices that you make in order to meet the needs of the Concord, Carolina, community um in your uh training? And again, this um inviting Andrew and Kristen also to um to answer this question when you're choosing your professional development and I'll stop there, it's a lot.
I I can start uh by giving you the genesis of the Can We Talk series. Um, so I sit on the board of the Adult and Community Ed, um, which is a part of the public schools. And we had a um board member, another board member, a white woman, um, come and say, she was in a particular situation uh at the grocery store in town, um, where there was uh another woman wearing a hijab. And um there was a white man who was saying negative things to uh to that uh woman wearing hijab. And um, the woman who brought the situation to our attention wanted to be an ally, she just didn't know what to say. She literally didn't know how to intervene, and I think that's um the silent majority. Um, and I was really encouraged, to me, that was um a little canary in the coal mine saying, this community is really ready to bring these conversations out. Um, and so that was how we started it, um, and started talking about being allies within the community. So I, you know, that's where it came from, that's that's the we. And just in terms of adult learning, you know, it's all optional. And we gotta work with people when they're ready and they're open. Um, or we could turn them the other way, you know, on any situation if we're sort of uh not giving them the option to um do it at their own pace. So Dr. Martin, I don't know, or Andrew, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think for me personally, you know, I take this work, um, you know, the the lens that I have within this work is, you know, comes from a very personal place. I think over the years, just listening to what are, you know, and and again, I've primarily worked with our Boston uh student population, you know, just hearing about their experiences informs a lot of the, my approach to this work. And, you know, I think for me, um, being in a district like Concord, uh, I know just very recently, it kind of dawned on me about, you know, I, you know, there there are colleagues out there that look like me, that may not feel safe. You know, whether they are the only black man in the district, or the only black woman, or the only person of color in the room uh to engage in this, in this sort of work, right? Um, because at the end of the day, when you are talking about race and you happen to be the only person of color in the room, you know, you you can get into a space where you may not feel safe enough to engage yourself in that work and 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 feel like you are the spokesperson for that work. Um, so for me, I think I have I've I've I've, you know, I have sort of, you know, my approach to this work is knowing that, you know, Dr. Hunter, for example, um, is leading by example, right? You have a superintendent that has made this work her priority and that vision trickles down, all the way down, right? You have a school committee that is that is very committed to this work. There are other school districts out there that have school committees and have superintendents that will shy away, far away from this type of work because it is difficult, right? But for me personally, I don't have the luxury to say, you know, I simply don't have the luxury to shy away from this work, right? Because I live it, I, you know, I I I hear it from my own students and it is sort of the 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 work at hand, right? It's it's that long, it's 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 exhausting work, but I know that at the end of the day, I am impacting those around me and those who willingly engage in this work. So, you know, the commitment we all have towards this from from Dr. Hunter to our, you know, to the school committee, uh, uh, to Kristen, to Dr. uh Martin. And even now, as you heard from our our professional development, uh, uh, presentation, we have faculty that are very much committed to this work. You have students that are engaged in this work, you have community, parents, et cetera. And so for me, that's, that gives me hope and that gives me the energy to continue uh to engage in these very difficult conversations. And and as I have mentioned in the past uh with folks, you know, I grew up in a, in a, in in a sort of in the world, or you know, back in Ghana, where this was never a conversation, right? You saw another person as just another human being, right? And so for me, I, it's 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 always, you know, I always reflect back on on the personal aspects of this work, because I know the impact is is so large and and for us to be so proactive about this work and so intentional about this work, um, I think it's it's it's, it gives me hope. And I know for many of our um Boston families, the fact that we even have these conversations, the fact that the school committee wants to engage in this work, I I, it says a lot to them. Um, and for folks, for families of color who live in Concord and Carlisle, um, who I'm sure are paying attention as well, although we, you know, we may not hear from them most often, but I know they are paying attention, you know, I know this work is near and dear to them as well. Um, so that's, you know, as as, you know, the support that Heather uh was mentioning, you know, I think the continuous sort of uh support, you know, supporting this work. You know, supporting Dr. Hunter, supporting our our admin team, our teachers and families who want to engage in this work, you know, I think I think that is what is needed to to make that drastic change, that drastic shift uh within our culture, so. Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the question also. Uh, let me see if I can um answer this in terms of curriculum. I've been doing this this work, teaching courses, thirty-five years now, uh, with ideas. And organically, like Kristen said, there was that person in the grocery store that said, I I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say, I don't know how to say it. If I say it, will I make a mistake? If I make a mistake, will I get judged? So how to have difficult conversations, the workshop, the course emerges. So when when teachers and even even parents, because the strategies are applicable, it's it's not just about race, but it's about the otherisms. When they say, I I really want to know how to do this, that course emerges. When um someone says unconscious bias, well, you know, I don't see any color, I don't see color. That's, that's, yeah, you do, or you should, and here's why. And and that's a biased piece, so let's talk about why you may be uncomfortable seeing color. What does that mean to you in terms of where you came from and where you're going? So that opens up a conversation about unconscious bias. Teachers say, well, what about my curriculum? You know, you say, let's, you know, how do I fix that? Well, you know, the lens through which you view A, yourself, B, the world, falls into your curriculums. Again, though, it requires a a systematic approach. So the, you know, like the 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 pre-K twelve lit review, really looking at what are we teaching? What are the words that we're using? Um, and so that you know, I I sit on the bias committee for the, for MCAS, um, and I've been there since inception, nineteen ninety-nine. And I also sit on the board with the SAT, PSAT college boards. They are actively going through material for bias. You know, because if there's bias there, that means students, all students can't enter, which is different than all students having the knowledge. Uh, so when we look at curriculum, it's, can all students access this? Is there something in there that might bump? Is there, are there the mirrors and the windows we talked about? Does our, does our curriculum reflect what we see? Students seeing themselves? Or are they constantly looking, sort of looking out the door? So that drives how we look at developing, how do we review curriculum? So there there isn't this mandate, in order to be the perfect anti-racist educator, you know, you have to take this, 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 and this. These courses and workshops are there and provided for stu- for teachers and faculty and community people who are interested. We do offer a, what we call Ideas 101, which is anti-racist practicing, practices for teachers. And that covers all, you know, sort of takes in all of the workshops that we may offer and gives, you know, it's almost like a buffet, if you will. And that's a graduate level course. And then teachers can go deeper into, I want to do a little bit more about um identity, I want to do a little bit more about um curriculum and so on. So I, does that, am I, am I close to what you asked with an answer?
Yes, very much, thank you.
I'm a consultant, you know, I could talk for three or four hours, so you you gotta, you know, in my mind, I'm going, did I answer the question succinctly?
Well, Dr. Martin, that might be my segue. Uh, and I'll address this uh to you and Kristen and Andrew through Dr. Hunter. Um, if I'm correct, we don't have another session uh with this team this school year, uh, but I think we might want to look toward that. Um, if we can uh ask for your participation again, because clearly this conversation says that uh we we want to engage as a school committee with you and we appreciate it.
Yeah, we're happy to come back, we feel your support, and we know you have a huge agenda for tonight, so so I think we should table it, uh, cuz literally, I think all of us could talk about it all night, yeah.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Dr. Martin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, certainly, Ms. Herbert, thank you. I I want to uh uh look at the agenda for a moment and uh I think Cynthia Rainey asked you, would you be amenable to uh a shift, uh, because I think that you uh are gonna lead with the Concord Capital Planning, if I'm correct, is that so?
Yeah, can I just, um, as I was very neglectful of a topic I wanted to bring up tonight, my liaison's report, I was gonna use this kind of as a um, so I'll, I'll be happy to to move the capital planning discussion later. But uh, the calendar committee met, and uh wh- while we're still not, have not finished our work on the calendar, I did make a commitment to um that group that we would have the um discussion with uh the town uh select board about having Indigenous Peoples' Day. And also in recognition- And also in recognition of the letters we got from our eighth graders, um I think it's an important thing. So I'm just curious um. If we could perhaps with Dr. Hunter's help, send the letters onto the select board with a request that they consider. Um discussing the topic of having Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar for twenty twenty-one.
Dr. Hunter, are you amenable to that?
Yeah, very much so, very much so. So we can talk whether you want to put a memo together from the school committee and then I'll help get them delivered.
So I guess just to have the right process, we've, do we have to have a memo discussed at the next school committee meeting? Or could we be a little less formal? Um I'm just trying to decide.
Um I I think if we acknowledge that that's an activity coming out of the calendar subcommittee, that would suffice. Do the members agree?
Yeah, I think you can delegate the chairs to the letter.
And of course, I'll work with you and Sarah, because I think it should come from both committees.
All right, do we have the approval of the members of the committee?
Anybody disapprove?
All right, so it's back to you and then you'll bring it to the chairs and we'll uh be working with Dr. Hunter throughout.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Just to be clear on processing, so it's clear to people listening too, this is not saying that we are.
Nope.
Reing right now to change it, it's saying that we're requesting a discussion.
That's correct, but I would like to do the select board to take the lead, so it's a town just.
Exactly.
Discussion decision, not just the schools.
Good, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
We want to see uh whether that conversation can be coordinated.
Right, exactly, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um I I move that uh uh the agenda be adjusted. Such that we take up uh item seven C at this time, the CCHI Athletic Season Update. Recognizing that we have Mr. Mistrullo and Mr. Jankus uh in the room with us. Um might I have a second, please?
Second for both committees.
Hi, everybody, and good evening, and roll call, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
That I for both.
And I think that was Fatima, yeah, okay.
What's called Medicare deep status?
Very good, okay. So check your microphones if they're on and shouldn't be, and Mr. Mistrullo, uh if you'd introduce Mr. Jankus and uh take it away, please.
Yeah, so I'm really here just to support Aaron, um Aaron Jankus, who's our athletic director. Uh for those that don't know, he was also the MEKO director before becoming the athletic director for, I think, a decade, Aaron.
Uh nine years, yeah.
Nine years, and so he's uh he's made a successful transition uh to the athletic director position. And center, uh you know, a really, a really good job with the support of the school committee and Dr. Hunter of just navigating a sports, you know, the the season, which has been the toughest of all. So, you know, really excited to um to have have him present, we, you know, we did have an opportunity to talk through it. And and we are just really grateful for the support that you provide, we know this is, it's not easy. And, you know, we we even um when we're debating, discussing and debating, sometimes it's, it's it can, we recognize that. You know, this this can be a challenge in the environment, in this environment, but but we're just grateful for the opportunity. Because we do recognize that kids can really benefit from from extracurriculars, particularly during this time with social isolation, so. Aaron.
Thanks very much, and um forgive me, everybody, I've got something wrong with the camera on my screen, so there's like a black spot right center. I'd echo the sentiments around uh the gratitude for support throughout the course of the year. I meet with my colleagues in the league, the eleven-member schools in the DCL each week. And we often talk about our administration and school committees, and I'm always gracious that. I can say that we've been really fortunate to to benefit from um. You know, certainly coaches and student athletes who are trying to make good decisions for the most part. Um all year long in order to have successful seasons, but um, you know, having Mike and and Dr. Hunter. And the school committee behind us has really made a big difference, so thank you very much. Um I'm gonna uh share my screen, I've got a couple of slides uh to share to talk about. Uh what we're calling the Fall Two Season, which the MIAA developed as sort of a wedge. Between the traditional winter and spring season. In order to play uh sports that are traditionally in the fall. Because as you will all remember, back in late August, as we were getting ready to start school. And the athletic year, uh there was a lot of uncertainty about what uh it would look like, so it feels a little bit like uh. We're all veterans of it at this point, but it was not that long ago, we were unsure, so. Let me just uh start the screen share here. So hopefully you can all see, I've got a dual county league slide up right now, is that correct?
We got it.
Excellent, so the Fall Two Season, uh as I mentioned, is a creation by the uh State Association for Athletics. And it starts on the Monday we return from February vacation. Um uh as with each season that we've had so far this year, uh the State Association has. Uh worked collaboratively with the state uh EEA office. Um and a subcommittee of school administrators and physicians, school nurses, superintendents. On the Sports Medicine Committee to develop safety guidelines uh that align with what the state has put out. For youth and amateur sports. In the Fall Two Season, uh the sports that are offered or approved are football. Uh cheerleading with very significant modifications. Volleyball, uh volleyball was actually approved for the regular fall season, but we moved it, like many schools, uh to this season. Because many of us were unsure about what indoor space would look like. Uh in in the need for social distancing in in school buildings, so we weren't sure about gym space. And then indoor track, uh which we'll talk about a little bit uh tonight as well. There are no state tournaments or sectional tournaments, uh everything's being done basically in a regional basis. And and what we've done in the league, as you may recall from earlier presentations, has created two different pods of schools. And essentially, uh you know, we stay within these pods for all uh interscholastic matchups. So Acton Boxborough, Lincoln Sudbury, Newton South, Westford Academy, and Concord Carlisle make up our competition pod. And in most cases, um there are some exceptions occasionally, but in most cases, these are the schools against which uh we compete. The benefit of this obviously is that, uh you know, these are towns like ours, communities like ours that have benefited from. Um lower uh infection rates, um and their school districts, I think, are utilizing some of the same strategies. That we are as a district uh to mitigate uh infection and spread. As I mentioned, the Fall Two Season will start on February twenty-fifth. It runs uh up through, the latest date will be the Saturday after April vacation, uh April twenty-fourth. My expectation is that it will it will likely end uh the weekend prior. There may be a couple of varsity competitions during the the week of April break, which is a traditional time that sports continue to run. Especially at the varsity level. We have about two hundred and fifty students signed up for our Fall Two offerings right now, uh so in these four sports. Uh there's definitely a significant amount of interest from our students. Uh the protocols will be similar to what they've been in the past, we're required to follow all of the guidelines and the sport modifications. Um we will not have any uh spectators right now for any of our indoor competitions, which will be volleyball only right now. Outdoor gatherings are limited to twenty-five uh people right now. So uh for a sport like football, for example, um we've basically put it on hold for a few weeks. The season's not expected to start with any games until mid-March. Um so, you know, we've tabled the decision about what we're going to do with spectators, but uh in the fall, you may recall that we were able to. Initially have one parent from each family attend games and we used a a lanyard system for admission. Um eventually that extended to to two families, uh two parents rather, or guests per athlete. Um so we'll we'll be abiding by all of the rules um for gatherings in terms of spectators. Our students have done a pretty good job overall, uh you know, I I mentioned to Dr. Hunter a couple of weeks ago, there was a photo in the Concord Journal. Uh for action during a basketball game and one of the student's masks was down below his nose. And I said, you know, we can do ninety-nine, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you know, they'll take that picture and we'll get it right. And the one time we don't, it ends up in the newspaper, of course, but um I think the important factor for the winter is that. Um we had uh, we had five basketball teams and three hockey teams. Uh in the high-risk sport category. And um in those cases, in those teams rather, when there was a positive COVID case. Um there were not any uh issues with team spread. So um there were two times during the season where there were more than one. Uh there was more than one student athlete on a team who tested positive. In one of those cases, there were some students that were carpooling together um without masks. And uh in another one of the cases, it was over the winter vacation and uh it affected kids on two different teams. But it turned out that they were gathering together, there were three of them altogether who were friends, who were getting together socially. Um to play video games in somebody's basement, so um I think those two uh were the examples where there were more than one. Um but other than that, our protocols uh are working. Um we did have to quarantine teams for uh two weeks uh during the season a few times, but. Um you know, those two-week quarantines are a precaution designed to keep everybody safe. It really results in just um, you know, five days of of uh extra remote learning. So uh you know, there is a a little bit of risk involved, of course, but. Um several of of our teams made it completely through the season without a quarantine. And our teams that were moderate-risk sports, which is what our volleyball program will be. Um and and what we've designed for our track program. Um and those include Nordic ski, Alpine ski, both had over fifty student athletes on each team, they made it through this, through the winter season. And um uh our fencing team, our swim team, which had virtual meets, uh had no positive cases. So I think we've really, we've really benefited from diligence, uh vigilance on the part of the coaches. And I think, uh you know, overwhelmingly, our student athletes recognize how important it is for them to be able to participate. And they do a good job with with um with following the rules. So um just a couple of of uh details um to highlight here. Just start sharing the screen there again. I think the two big questions for this season will focus on uh football, understandably as a high-risk sport. And then there are a lot of questions around uh indoor track, so. Um I'll start with football and certainly we'll take any questions about either one afterwards, but. Um the modifications for football on the field are are not significant. Um they, you know, they they didn't change the way that the game will be played uh very much. What they've modified are uh the roster sizes will be decreased a little bit. We will have three distinct levels of teams, uh where traditionally your junior varsity and varsity kids practice together. There'll be two separate distinct teams. Um huddling will be different, um sidelines will look different. So, you know, all of the sort of uh dead time, so to speak, that is involved in a football game. Uh similar to what's uh occurred this winter with basketball and hockey. Um you know, it it's sort of this interesting mix where you watch a basketball game in our gym and the kids are competing on the floor, playing the game, much as it's designed to be played. And then you look over on the sideline and I've got chairs six feet apart for them and they all have an assigned seat and uh huddles look different and things like that. So I I think the same is planned for football. Um we are going to continue uh to treat football as a high-risk activity. And so that if there is a positive case on a team, um we are going to quarantine uh the team for the two-week period. That's, again, as I said, worked well during the winter. I think the advantage is that it's outdoors. We have also ordered uh special masks that we're going to require for all students uh during practice and games. It's a, it's a full shirt that's attached to a mask with hooks around the ears. Um so that'll allow students to keep those on and secure underneath their helmets, um still have their mouthguards in. Um which is, you know, sort of a logistical challenge for football players. Um we'll play a limited schedule, it's five weeks. And um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to replicate, you know, a couple of Friday nights if it's warm enough and give the kids that experience. And recognizing that um, you know, the seasons are all a little bit different this year. Questions about football before I go into track?
Yeah, a quick question, Aaron, hey there. I remember in the fall with field hockey, there was an example of a game where we found out two days later, a day later, that someone on the opposing team. Was diagnosed with COVID. Um in, now in field hockey, they're not quite as close, and in football, given the way they work and hit each other and they're all on top of each other. I- is that more, a case like that, is that more likely to put our whole team into quarantine or some of them? Or i- is that, are we figuring that out as we go?
That's a really good question, um we were fortunate this winter to not have that experience, but there were some schools in the league that did. Um one of the benefits uh of uh not having spectators is that we figured out how to videotape every game. Um so this happened uh between two communities in a basketball game at the boys varsity level. And uh what the school districts did was consulted with the Board of Health, they actually watched the video. Um and tried to determine, okay, what were the, you know, who was in close contact and for how long. Um so I think um I think it's really a case-by-case basis, that if something like that comes up. Um you know, a a football roster might be forty-five students.
Right.
And there could be some kids that just play, you know, special teams, so they're just in on kickoffs, for example.
Right.
Um you know, there's a difference between somebody who's uh in that role maybe and who's playing, you know, offensive and defensive line. And colliding with someone on the other team, you know, every play, so I think we'll look at it on a case-by-case basis. You know, we've uh, I think we've all developed good working relationships with our boards of health, um I know that's the case for us in town. We'll we'll lean on them and and um, you know, their advice and guidance if a situation like that comes up.
Makes sense, thanks.
So uh we have a robust indoor track program every year. Um uh as you know, we don't have an indoor track facility, so uh in the winter. Uh our indoor track program uh has some students who practice in our uh gymnasium at the high school. Some who are outside, um distance runners will will, you know, do a run on campus or off, depending on the weather and the snow and so forth. Um this year, uh it, the facilities where we usually compete are not available. So the Reggie Lewis Center is being used as a vaccination site, it's not open. Um Boston University is another uh site that we use as a league, they are not uh allowing any outside rentals. Um and even if they were, the idea of having multiple teams, uh some of whom, like us, have over a hundred student athletes participating on the team. Coming together indoors to compete seems pretty daunting. So the MIAA's Sports Medicine Committee did release indoor track modifications. But the sense was uh sort of that they were, they were not going to make a decision about whether or not to allow the sport. They felt like their role as a committee was to present modifications and that it was up to us as a league. Um to determine whether or not we could run events safely. Um so as a league, we also do not have a a facility, there are some schools with field houses. Um that can have some modified practices. Um we're not comfortable with running a practice indoors the way that uh a track team would need to practice. So what we've developed is what we're calling uh Fall Two Track. Uh which will basically be four days per week. Um we'll structure it uh as a team, we want kids to benefit from having the opportunity to be part of a team. To to have the benefits of that camaraderie and um the opportunities for our seniors and captains to lead. Um, for our students who are uh new to, new to track to really have an opportunity to, to meet their peers, but also learn about the different events and so forth. But we're going to run the program outdoors. Um, we're going to start on March first, so we'll wait a week after February vacation uh to begin the program. We will run it through the Fall Two Season. Um, and then as the weather improves in April, um, we'll, we're sort of leaving it on the table that there may be an opportunity to run some uh outdoor uh indoor track events. I know that sounds sort of contradictory, but indoor track, for example, uh, the, the sprint distance is different than outdoor track in the spring. So they're not perfect matches. The track markings, for example, are very different indoors than they are outdoors. The number of turns on a longer run are different. So there are a lot of variables there, but um we're going to start our program uh as sort of an intramural program. We're going to decrease the user fee by fifty percent because we're not going to have meat fees and transportation costs and officials and things of that nature. Um, but we are going to have students register like they would for, for us, uh, interscholastic sport. Um, and you know, we have so many kids that are interested and really committed that we want to provide an opportunity for them to participate. And at the very least, this will be uh a chance for them to be ready to go for Spring Track, which will start uh in April. So I expect that we'll have probably around a hundred students that will participate in that program. And uh, there should be a run on hats and mittens and earmuffs for the, for the next couple of weeks because they're going to be outside raving yellows. Questions about track?
True New Englanders.
All right.
I love the creativity of outdoor-indoor track. This is how we do things this year, right?
I think it's an excellent um approach. Um, having had uh kids run track, um, especially for freshmen, um, just getting this introduction to how this all works, I think it's going to be great and will really give outdoor track a, a nice um start, won't be so abrupt. Requires such a Steve Klein for the coaches and students. So great, great work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? No, thank, thank you for all your work and making this happen. I mean, I don't think we thought we would be here, so. I know it takes, it takes.
If you had told me we were going to talk about running football, I would have taken another bet. So.
Honestly.
Been really great for the kids and.
I have a question about overall, about the winter sports.
Yes.
And I, I'm, I'm uh, I think Dr. Hunter might be talking to us about testing later, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But um, just to try to avoid these um fourteen-day quarantines, I think whatever we can do to test students on Monday and perhaps delay this start, especially for the football team, um, until we get those test results, I think that would make everybody's life a lot easier because it would be really unfortunate to have like a one day of practice and then come back and we find a couple of kids are positive in our testing. Um, you know, I just, I think it would be so helpful to try, try to figure out how to test the students the first week back and maybe delay a little bit the start of football since you're not starting track. When are you starting volleyball on the first day too?
So uh cheerleading volleyball and football are scheduled to start on that, on that Monday we return. And track would be the following Monday with a week, a week break.
So I would just ask you, Mr. Masulo and Dr. Hunter, to consider, you know, if, if we could do it, I just think it would really provide benefit overall to, to keeping things on track. I know the track isn't starting, but um, yeah, just a, a thought.
Be, before we come back to that, uh, Erin, did your slide say Feb. twenty-five?
Uh, yes, did I mistype?
I don't know. I, I thought I heard it or saw it, but.
Well, you, you did, but now that you're saying it, um, I'm thinking that I, it's February twenty-second, excuse me. The season ends April twenty-fifth, and so that's what was in my head.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday is the twenty.
Or maybe the smudge wa, on your screen was, was.
Maybe that's what.
I remember, maybe. So, so given the importance of this, let's, let's take a few minutes on it. Uh, uh, does the, does the, the added assurance that you're going to get a season uh warrant a really close look at the practicality of pulling off test, re-entry testing after vacation?
Yes, we've had, I've, and I'll, I'll grab this one because I've had this conversation across Erin and Mike and with the nurses. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're prepping to do the structured scheduled testing over the course of that week back. Um, the nurses felt pretty strongly that to try to ramp up to do a larger-scale testing on that Monday would be a lot between now and then because they only have a couple of working days this week. Um, the other concern they had was just access to it, depending on how we offered it. If we're, you know, driving through or, you know, doing it off school hours or not with school transportation, could everyone come in if we needed them to? Um, whether it be, you know, students of working parents or the kids coming from Boston or, or et cetera. So we've, we've been discussing this. We, I don't know that we're going to be quite up and running to do it. Um, but we certainly understand why it's been brought up as a discussion point. We'll talk more on it over the rest of the week, just to see if there's an option.
We would characterize these teams as being students at uh statistically higher risk because of the physical contact and the additional hours, correct?
Uh, certainly, certainly the football's a high risk. Um, the other's a little less, but certainly.
So would that mean that in your planning conversations, you would include uh potential prioritization?
I don't know. Uh, part of the scale up here is, you know, how many kids we're going to test on a day and getting schedules set and, and some of that. So I, I don't know if this would throw such a curve ball to that, that in the next couple of days, we could make this, make this an option. Um, the nurses were fairly overwhelmed with the process in and of itself. So we can talk more on that. We've actually had a conversation over whether we should mandate any testing for any of the athletes. We don't feel that's totally in our purview. Um, and I, again, had some of that same response. The nurses just haven't done this yet with the kids. So I think there's a bit of unknown that they're reacting to and as they get ramped up for hundreds and hundreds of kids a week to try to, try to be sure that they're going to be able to manage that and what we need if we have to add help or anything like that. So.
Uh, at the very least, I take uh Cynthia Rainey's uh comments to mean that this school committee is very concerned, but I think you already knew that, Mr. Jongus.
Hmm, yeah.
I mean, if I may, if I may say one quick thing too, and I, I will readily admit that my position evolves and fluctuates and ebbs and flows. So it's, it's not an ironclad position. It might even change tomorrow. Um, I, I too worry about fifty-plus kids being quarantined. I mean, that was, that's, it's not an ideal situation. You know, the players do know the risk going in. I think that's important that everyone understands what, what the risks are. Um, you know, if it was possible to test everyone at the start to avoid that, I think that would, you know, on one point makes sense. You know, I do think answering the question about equity is a tough one though, too. And you know, there might be a lot of parents that would, would, would request that their child be tested on that Monday. And so I do think that might be a tough one to answer when someone asks that question. So.
Yeah, there's one question. Oh, go ahead, Erin.
Sorry. Um, for context, I think that uh we as a school and certainly in the league, uh, were concerned about the winter break um and students returning to play uh that first week. We held on to the schedule because uh the season started in mid-December and uh games started that first week of January. We, we held on to the schedule. Um, and we were uh, I think pleasantly surprised, uh relieved, maybe is a better word, that coming back from winter break uh with our student athletes, we did not see uh an uptick in the number of cases um throughout the league. Um, I don't have the exact numbers. It's a little bit anecdotal, but um, you know, certainly uh whenever there's a team that's quarantined in the league, it affects all of us because there's a domino effect with scheduling. And there was not a rush to adjust games and matchups and so forth in those first uh two weeks back. So um, you know, I think there could be, uh, in addition to coaches, uh, as a, as a leadership team for myself and, and Mike and from Dr. Hunter, to uh just continue with the message around the importance of um during vacation, staying home, keeping masks on, uh, not doing anything to jeopardize um, you know, participation. Uh, I think for our students in the football and volleyball programs in particular, they had their seasons postponed in August and remember that disappointment. And I think that they have a real stake in um, in, in, in their own ability to get the seasons off the ground um successfully.
Good. Well, we will uh, we, we will second those, uh, those hopes. It repeats itself from December to, to uh the February break. And that you'll, you'll amplify those messages, as I'm sure you will.
Will do, certainly.
And Dr. Hunter, this is still a ongoing conversation on your end.
Oh, this conversation never stops once we kick these seasons open. Um, and I don't want to say that, you know, any of this comes easily. We're so committed to the opportunity that unfortunately it comes with these hard, hard factors of quarantine and, and other dominos that allow us to have the opportunity. I don't want to diminish, it's really hard to quarantine a whole group of kids. We don't take that lightly. And I'm going to say that again to you in a minute when I do the COVID update. We know, and I don't think we saw initially before school opened what, what weight that would be for us. And it definitely, and certainly is, we, we carry that. Um, we, and we're, we're going to get through it hopefully in the way the families do, that the choices are to not offer things because they come at the risk of the quarantines. And I'll talk more in a little bit on why we're doing what we're doing, but you know, the success so far has made it worth it. Um, and seeing kids be able to engage, at least to whatever opportunity we can give them has mattered greatly to us and I think mattered greatly to the kids. And ultimately, that's the bottom line. So.
Yeah, I really don't think that point, uh, Dr. Hunter, can be understated.
No.
I mean, there's really not, I mean, we, there's definitely kids that are, that are, that are struggling in this environment and um, whatever their outlet is, whether it's sports or, or theater, is, is really crucial.
So thank you for your support. This is a, this is an endeavor some districts have not taken on at all. And um, you know, your support's absolutely critical to it because it comes with all of these variables and factors and we're, we're grateful for that.
Yeah, we're, we're grateful for you enabling kids to have these opportunities and recognizing that uh we don't want to add to the jeopardy. So thank you.
I was going to say, as a parent of uh some kids, one in particular whose sanity you are saving, thank you for running athletics.
Thank you for saying that.
All right. Good luck.
Thanks very much.
We all count on luck, but we'll take it.
It never hurts.
Right.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.
Night, thanks.
Thank you. It is eight o'clock. Um, and we still have quite a bit of work ahead of ourselves. Could I propose that we have a slight break right now?
Yes, please.
It's eight oh two. Back at eight ten. What time do we want to come back?
Eight, ten sharp. We're rolling.
Eight minutes for dinner. Go. Yeah.
So this is why we start at five, so we can go till 11 and it won't feel like a long night, right?
I just want to apologize earlier. I had a glitch. My screen went blank. I had to switch computers and it was really.
Yeah, you were on twice. I could use like your shirt was in one screen, your head is in another.
I wanted to turn off the computer and it wouldn't. So I apologize.
It's fine. Today, all of my emails, all of them, except for 16 are just gone. I'm having like a kind of not panic attack, but that's like weird.
Sometimes they can recover.
I'm hoping. It's bizarre.
Be, be confident that you can recover them. Don't, don't give up. Don't trash your account or anything.
I know. It's making me nervous. Someone asked me for a document for this board that I'm on that meets now. And I'm like, I, I can't give it to you. It's gone. Like, oh, it's wild. Anyway.
Good luck with that. That's nerve wracking.
It is. It's weird. It's never happened to me. I guess I've made it to my mid 40s.
All, all is not lost yet. The reason I say that is it's happened to me, you know, completely vanished.
To me, I called, I called, I think I called Microsoft and they managed to walk me through how to recover it all. Yep.
I'm a Gmail person. We'll see.
So we've got almost everybody back. We never formally adjourned anything. So we can pick things up at now. It's 8:11. If that's okay with you, Sarah.
Yep. And are we ready for Cynthia? Is that?
Oh, yeah. She's here.
Yep.
And I don't see ever necessarily, but we're moving to Concord, a business anyway, correct?
I think we're doing, yeah, we're doing the Capitol, Concord Capital Planning Task Force update with Cynthia.
Yeah, I mean, I could just give you a brief update. The Select Board charged a committee called the Capital Planning, excuse me, the Concord Select Board, called the Capital Planning Task Force to look at how we might adjust perhaps the capital planning process in Concord. And I would say essentially it comes down to two options, one of which is I will call, we were calling it the Enhanced Process. And the other is having a standing committee to reveal, to review capital planning. And so pretty soon, we're probably going to take a vote on one or the other. As far as either a standing committee or an enhanced process. We haven't exactly defined the enhanced process, but would be something like a joint meeting of the Concord Select Board and the Concord and Concord Regional School Committees to look at. We're talking large capital projects, $5 million or greater. So the effort would be to look out and sequence them over a 10-year period. So, and have it reviewed every year. Honestly, most of the other large capital projects are Concord, Town of Concord and not the Concord Public Schools. Obviously, we have a large capital project that we're in the midst of right now in Concord. So that's really, I just wanted to bring you up to date because Dr. Hunter and myself and Jared do invest. We meet twice a month, do invest some time. So I don't know if Lori, you had anything else to add that I might have missed?
No, I think that's a great summary. Again, I don't think we see that this will pertain to school-related needs because the middle school's already got, got its momentum. But we certainly want to be part of the conversation. A lot of this has been about collaboration with the town, between the town and schools and taking what's grown a long way in three and a half, my three and a half years for sure. And trying to really memorialize that and structure that more formally, I think.
Yes.
So I think we're happy to be part of that discussion and figure how everyone talks big picture and syncs up together and prioritizes collaboratively.
And if anybody on the committee or in the community has strong opinions or any opinions, be, be sure to attend our meetings. And I, I don't know if we have another forum planned. I don't know. We said we won't do another forum. But so, and we are due to complete our work right in June when everything else is due. So hopefully we can be proactive and get our work done sooner rather than later.
Cynthia, remind us, this is a Select Board Committee in its creation. Is it a Select Board Committee for its appointments or a manager?
Nope, it's a board.
Select Board. Thank you. Good.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have a standing, I mean, the usual time that you guys meet?
Yes, we usually meet, I think it's the first and third Wednesdays. I'm pretty sure that's it. Yeah. So we do meet next week during vacation week. So if you have.
Right.
Don't have anything to do.
Three o'clock in the afternoon.
Three, three on Wednesdays.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
I think then we can move on to old business COVID updates.
Yeah, that's me. So I did prepare a few slides just for talking points. And really, I think I want to cover different pieces of what's been referenced at different points already tonight. I, I think it's important to give you a high level view of where we are with our COVID cases, the data that's come, reminders of the protocols that we're following. But I also then want to be sure we reference testing and, you know, what our goals and visions are here for next steps, short and long term. And I think that'll address some of the questions you've had come to you tonight. So I think what's important is to, to give you some data to start with. And I didn't bring you all the data I could have. I wanted to stay at a high level. This is data as of today. We've had 124 school-related cases. 27 staff or adults, 97 kids. And those are broken out across the schools. It's actually fairly proportionate to the populations of the schools. The elementaries aren't quite equal, but overall, it's generally proportional to the, to the school demographic. I think it's really important to say out loud to you that on November 23rd, Thanksgiving week, we had 15 cases. So I just want to state that, you know, over 100 cases since the end of November is a pace and a, a structure and a process that has required an awful lot of work by an awful lot of people to both support kids and families, support the adults who might get positive, support those who are exposed, manage the structures and the quarantines and the close contact tracing, manage the communication. I mean, it is an all hands on deck effort across the administrators, the nurses and beyond. And just really important to state that I think we're, we're doing this really successfully. And the goal has been to breed confidence and we're really, really glad that we have. That's been so important. But it doesn't come without an awful lot of commitment and a lot of effort and energy by a lot of people and a lot of time. And I know, you know, we're pretty communicating very transparently. So you can all see the days and times that, you know, we're, we're getting cases across holidays, weekends. It truly is 24/7. It's a labor of love. And every time I get someone who thanks us or is appreciative, it is a labor of love. We are that committed to keeping school open, to giving kids opportunities like sports. But I just feel like I need to say all of that because the precursor, this is the backdrop and precursor to why some of the requests tonight aren't different and are going to take time to, to morph and change into what people are hoping for. So I guess I'll then transition to, you know, the even higher level of work and monitoring that's had to happen over the last two weeks was our first experience in school transmission. At Alcott, we've had eight total cases related to one another. Seven of those transmission within the classroom. One is a familial case that resulted after the, one sibling was diagnosed positive. The level of communication and support from the town and state officials was critical and crucial. And their responsiveness mattered greatly. But I don't want to understate, I've spent the last two weeks wondering if I need to close Alcott on a day-to-day basis. So it's just really important that the frame be made for where we are. The goal has been maintaining and sustaining since we opened. And that's why we're slow and stable and steady because that alone has had a lot of energy put to it. It would be really easy to slide backwards here. I'm pretty sure other superintendents would have closed Alcott in the last two weeks. I took the confidence I got from the state and local officials to say it feels contained within those two classrooms. And that's our processes working, that unless you get a random case, you can't explain. In another part of Alcott, we think you can stay the course. But it's just critical to frame where we're at because it's the backdrop for everything else we're going to talk about. So knock on wood here, we're coming out of the timeline where Alcott's, you know, student and staff transmission shouldn't be expanding and it has stayed within those two classrooms. So the good news is, and I didn't put the state level data up or the, the community level data up. We're seeing, you, you all know this, the surge seems to be, you know, in the decline. The state numbers have been under 1,500, two days in a row. I couldn't, I'm not sure who could be more excited by that, me or Trish McGeehan. The community numbers are dropping in suit with that. Carlisle's gone all the way to gray. Concord's held, held steady, which is great because at one point there was escalation there. Those are pretty big drivers and obviously they have impact on the school, community and the, and the population, you know. To, to talk about, you know, referencing sports, and I'll get into the quarantines in a minute, that we got through that surge playing high-risk sports in the months of December and January. It came at the cost of some quarantines. It absolutely did. But we got through it without transmission among those teams. And we, we sustained a season. So just some other reminders, and I hate to talk at you, but it just feels like it's time to sort of put it all back out there in a big picture way. We are maintaining the 14-day quarantine and I'm, I'll give you my explanation for that. The, the state and federal governments have given other options of seven and 10-day quarantines. In consultation with the, the health leadership at the school level and at the town level, we have stuck with the 14 days and it is conservative and it is longer than some other places have gone to. I know plenty of other districts that are staying with 14. Some have gone, started to go to the 10. Some of this right now is, is because we've watched cases happen. And sometimes it's a matter of testing timing and there's so many variables that play out into when, when a positive can happen. We've watched and been, been actively engaged with cases getting diagnosed on day 10. I absolutely think there will be room to reduce this as we get towards the better weather, the case counts are, are slower. And we're able to feel like we've got a little more breathing room there. So the hope is to go to 10 days. I don't want to say there's a timeline. I think we're going in the right direction toward that. I think it's important to realize that during the surge of December, January, we really felt like anytime anything happened, it switched from the beginning of the year where we felt like it was very likely whatever was going on wasn't COVID. And then as that surge exploded, it felt like we had to treat everything like it could be COVID. And those are very different mindsets to be operating under, which is also why you'll see later on, we added, you know, the siblings to become part of the discussion. As of that same November stretch, we asked siblings of anyone ill to stay home until we knew if that ill person had COVID or not. That, that is extraordinarily conservative, just like the quarantine. That is not CDC protocol. That is not DPH protocol. Those are contacts of maybe contacts. Like we're just, you know, really stretching and it mattered. We reduced the number of quarantines because the siblings who could have exposed someone else weren't actually in the school setting. That is why so many of the emails go out saying they were not in school. There was no exposure. It, it is all working. So I know it's hard and I know it's restrictive, but I do think there's been positive benefit to the larger scale community. Alexa, I think you're.
Can I have a, yeah, I have a quick question just because God willing, no one's been sick in my house. Now I feel like that's jinxing it. So let's pretend my, I have a kid that is not feeling well. So they have a stomach ache, whatever. So do you guys recommend then that, so on day one, my kid has stays home, say it's Monday. Do you recommend then that like they don't get tested for several days? Is that why these kids have been isolated for so long? So there's no more, oh, my kid feels sick. We're going to run and get a test the next day. You guys have changed that protocol. I'm just.
Yeah. So the, the real guidance has been to, you know, four to six days is the best time to test. We don't insist on it has to be a certain day. There are, I know private school in town that says it has to be day five. We have not gotten to that level of. So yes, a combination of the fact that if you wait those four to five days and then it takes you two days to get a test back, you're at seven days already from being at school. And the other way that it really plays out is if someone in the family at home has COVID, you know, or then you're quarantined. And by the time perhaps the student ends up positive, they've been home for at least a week under the quarantine. So the processes are working. They're really hard. I totally appreciate that. We're all putting in a lot to try to make this work and it, it's really hard. We are at a 10-day isolation for the positive COVID case so that we have, we are, we are aligned with the general, general guidance. We've talked a lot about the high-risk sports and quarantining the whole teams. That has been a lot, but it's also allowed us to, to keep playing. We are still continuing to quarantine the entire elementary classroom. That was critical last week at Alcott, that those kids were already home. And as they became positive, they hadn't been in other places. So I don't expect that will change. That's come up a number of times with the asymptomatic testing. We will be testing asymptomatic in pools according to classrooms. So if you get a positive pool, this came up on the webinar yesterday, you automatically are quarantining the classroom because someone in there is positive. So it, it could be that we have more quarantine, but we also want to remember the asymptomatic is about containing spread. And we don't want to, it's good to know that and to, to slow it down because some of the Alcott story is asymptomatic cases in those, in those classrooms. We do very much contact trace for the middle and high school students. We are, you know, tracking their day, talking with staff, talking with the kids, talking with who's actually been within six feet for more than 15 minutes. So that's a more literal contact tracing. I'm just referencing our current protocol for travel. We are not, again, following state guidance. We are asking that people test after they return to Massachusetts. Not within the 72 hours before. And now this was as of last week because there's enough folks out there positive who've had COVID that they will now need to provide us a positive COVID test if they've been positive in the last 90 days in lieu of a test when they return. And that's because they will continue to test positive for a period of time. We actually expect that 90 days to go to 180 fairly soon. And just a reminder, the goal here has been preserving, preserving health and safety and maintaining opportunities. We've been open since September 9th and short of a day here or there for remote weather or early on with a remote case. We haven't had to stop that and we're proud of that. And we're glad and excited by what that's offered to kids. And the goal has been to stay, stay open. Just a reminder of testing and how much we've grown in this regard, symptomatic testing. There are now, we are offering paid options for families and. Um, symptomatic testing, there are now, we are offering paid options for families and there's obviously free options. Uh, the Cambridge option where families can drive into the site in Cambridge and get a test. Um, we are regularly testing out of CCHS's nurse's office. Um, symptomatic staff who the district is paying for and symptomatic students um, at a, on a needed basis as best we can manage, um, and they are covering those costs. If families need free options, the good news is, as the surge has declined, these options have become easier to access. Stop the spread um, sites back on track with free options there. And of course, a doctor's order will also help insurance to cover it. Um, asymptomatic, we've gotten up and started two weeks in a row so far with the staff. So they tested the week of January twenty-sixth and February first. Um, in both cases, all of the pools were negative, so we're glad for that. Um, we're preparing, as we've referenced earlier, to add um, students to the process the week we get back from break. The deadline is tomorrow, we had a uh, webinar yesterday, it was well attended and continue to answer questions. Um, and I will actually, you know, feedback we're getting is the quarantine is part of the decision for families and for now, it is what it is. Um, the, I I hear the the more pertinent timeline of quarantine that immediately worries people. It seems as if they're in a positive pool and they need to wait for the individual tests to come back. And um, because, you know, you've got to then access one of these other sites to do it. It might be twenty-four or forty-eight hours before you know if you're the positive pool. Um, so we are hopeful, uh, many districts have seen growth as the process has rolled out and people see how few positive pools there are and start to engage more. But we're, we're grateful for how engaged people are already and looking forward to um, getting everything up and running. The state program is running through March twenty-sixth. Um, so we are funded fully for staff and student testing through the end of March. Um, we are going to have to have some conversations over the next few weeks and month here as to what the options are after that. Um, I did hear actually while we were on the meeting from one of the nurses at the state saying they might be able to extend it a week. So we'll take every week the state will give us um, so that we aren't on our own for fiscal responsibility quite yet. And then I just want to start really honing in on this because I know it's a big question for everybody. I know we mentioned it during the budget process, but I want to be explicit. We absolutely have a goal of full return in September. I don't see all the factors, and I'll go through those just quickly in a minute, coming together before that. And this is the shortlist, there's probably more than I need to add to it, but these are the glaringly front loaded topics that need to be part of that discussion of full return. Um, the local and state virus rates are obviously really important. It's great, they're starting to go in a better direction. In school, transmission is absolutely a driver. Um, it certainly has made us step back and realize how fragile this can be. Um, we knew that already, but to live quite how fragile it can be and that we can't take it for granted and look at what, what happened and what might have caused what and really learn from that. Um, I guess the other piece to name is, and you see the six feet are there. It certainly hasn't increased our comfort to go to less than six feet right at this moment in time. So we're going to maintain the six feet for the time being. And we'll need to talk on how we get to less than six feet, um, because that's a big driver in um, being able to bring everybody back, especially at middle and high school. Asymptomatic testing, I think, was a critical component of this. Um, so we're excited that's happening, there will be more funding discussions to have as we go forward and especially assuming we will need some of that in place in the fall. And then I probably should put it in big capital letters, I do believe the vaccination of the staff is a really big driver here. Um, it's very disappointing that that hasn't happened in February as we had thought. It's now undefined in terms of timeline, we're all hoping March is the first dose administration with follow-up in April, but we're, we're lacking any details right now. So um, that's been very disappointing across the Commonwealth and and, you know, where we are with that. So this list will grow, but I wanted to at least start with what I see as the the biggest components. Um, we want everybody back in the fall very much so, no question about that. Uh, and we want to sustain what we have. And I think probably the growth I see for the spring, just given where all these variables are in February, we would love to be able to do, you know, more of the the special things and make sure we're offering some of those spring traditions and even tweaked and adjusted, making kids feel like they've got a community. So could we get, can we get creative, you know, I think is what we're going to be hoping for. Can we get creative with how we're managing our space and time and day and all of that? Um, probably post MCAS, which I'm not going to get into my very big frustrations on that discussion right now. Um, that can be an update later, but you know, the state's about to force us, it looks like, to use parts of the spring to run these tests, ask remote families to come in and take tests and offer hybrid kids. A on one day, B on, you know, it's looking like a very big distraction and um, challenge. So we're, we're going to have to navigate all of these other requirements that come along. But um, we're, we're here because of this community's collaboration and support of one another. And I know, we're all fatigued, there's no question, right? We're all fatigued and wish this were different. Um, I think staying the course though is how we've been successful and I think how we're going to start to come, come to greater success and eventually make our way back full time with whatever that means in the fall and um, spend, spend the spring enjoying the fact that we've made it through this school year so so productively and successfully. Um, so that, that's where I'm at, happy to hear feedback and questions.
Laurie, in regard to that last slide, September twenty twenty-one, um, last week we spoke about summer. Uh, and you reference all the the creativity necessary to do as much as we want to do, as much as we can do. Um, is there a thought to uh, how uh, summer services might not happen in early July, but might happen in August this year? Do we have that kind of flexibility or are we talking about it?
Oh, we're talking a lot about it, so just quick updates on what we, we've been sketching out for the summer. Um, we are actually, Alcott's going to be offline because of the capital projects you're going to get reminded of in a few minutes. Um, Thoreau is going to house the Case Collaborative Special Education Summer Program, which we're excited about. That was supposed to happen last year. And Willard will be our home base for both special education and elementary summer programs, both regular ed and special education, all assuming we need COVID protocols and distance and all of that.
Um, I'll remind my colleagues, summer school started in the Willard because there was one air conditioner in the schools and that was in the Willard library.
Right, so our buildings are going to be busy. I'm also in early conversations with Concord Rec and what, um, they're going to run an after noon portion to the Willard piece, but you know, they were very successful at high school last year. Um, so they're interested in hearing what space we might have available, some of the camps and programs for the older kids that have traditionally used some of our facilities have started reaching out. So it feels like the energy this summer will be very active. Um, and I think we're to the level of comfort, we know what a safety plan needs to look like and I think can navigate that. Um, to your question, a lot of that will happen in July as it normally does, we expect some might go into the early part of August.
Okay.
Get back and follow up with a question there. Um, I know this is going to be a, an indulgence certainly. Uh, I I wonder if you've been hearing from families um, in terms of uh, registering for summer camp, those families that um, are going to be part of the summer school. Um, how soon can they know when summer school is running so that they can choose the sections where they are putting their kids in summer camp?
So what I know is that we're in the, you know, development process right now. Both Ruth Grooby in special ed and Kristen in regular ed are actively pulling those plans together. They've been meeting over the last few weeks. I also know Concord Rec, who's been in touch with us is in the same stages of discussion of what they're going to be able to offer. So um, I don't think we're going to be running a whole lot later than normal, actually, given, given where we are. It's off frequent for us to put, put information out usually sometimes in March. Um, Concord Rec, I think they're trying to solidify it so they can get the information out to families too. So I guess the answer is it's coming as quickly as we can pull it all together. But we're, we're fairly on track, the timeline at this point.
So Dr. Hunter, um, I know there's a pretty big shoe that's going to potentially drop in the next couple of days from the Biden administration regarding the very aggressive um, stance on school reopening. And I just read that they are specifically saying that they do not say, think vaccine is a necessary component to this. The other thing is, is the big bill, which is going to be considerable amount of money even for districts like ours. Um, uh, I do see that it's going to have a very strong earmark for summer, very aggressive summer work. Um, so I think that's another, you know, I don't think we should have very specific plans for a little while until we really see what this is all about. Um, because we, we might have the ability to have a more robust summer program for those people who need it. Um, so I still think there's a lot that's going to happen over the next couple of weeks, so.
No question. The good news is I think we've learned how to build the seed to something and then grow it or morph it along the way. So that, any changes to that, um, we're all anxious to hear the Biden plan. Uh, there's a lot of discussion among my colleagues and other districts of, what, you know, without having seen it, you know, aggressive return, is that targeting those of us who have kids in school and have been in school since September? Or is it targeting districts who have not even opened yet? Or both, you know, I, I don't know. And of course, saying of that, is it required and living, living the comfort of not ha, you know, the reality of still not having it is different. Um, but we're anxious to hear their thinking and expect it to feel at least like there's a guiding ship there, whether it's a timeline we all are tweaking locally and trying to, you know, match or not, it's, it feels like direction, which um, will be good.
And I think in terms of budget and um, a lot of things, we just have to, it's just such a big variable.
Yeah, correct. I mean, ideally, it's going to pay for the testing that I keep referencing here that we don't know how we're paying for after the first of April. Um, and any other costs that, you know, aren't totally funded at the moment, so. Um, I know other districts that have tried to open up more fully and you, you can't forget how wide of a berth COVID has had here. You know, one of, one of my former districts went from the hybrid elementary model. And I'll just remind everybody, we're not in a hybrid elementary model in that way. Our kids are in school five days a week, which is really good. Um, but in trying to, in bringing them, bringing more of them back, they actually assigned, I mean, in other times, you could never do this, actually assign families days you could ride the bus and other day said you just can't.
Right, yeah.
You know, so there's, there's just this wide scale level of work to be done and somewhere you hit another roadblock and have to decide if you're going to be able to navigate it or not, so um. So I can't say enough thank you, you know, I, I often am, you know, the communication vehicle here, but this level of work has had the depths of everyone involved. Um, whether it's, you know, the contact tracing at all hours of the day and night or teachers who learn they're going remote, like one of them did while we've been on this meeting. Or otherwise even, you know, we've actually got so proactive, like if we even suspect there's a child who's symptomatic and someone in the family has it, like we might just close the room for the day while we wait for the test result. Um, you know, the, the level of everything that's happened here since September is pretty phenomenal. And um, really grateful for everybody's commitment to that, the family support's been fantastic. Um, the communication from families when things are COVID wise, happening for them or otherwise, has been fantastic. And it's just this, you know, path we want to stay on here and we've, I think, showed we're pretty resilient. So we're going to stay the course for sure.
Thank you, Lori. And thank you to everybody who's making this work. I think that back in September when we were among, I don't know, what was it, thirty percent of schools that had any kind of in-person uh, plan? And who would have thought that we'd have sports, that we'd be going still? I, it's a, it's a tremendous effort on everybody's part, on the community's part, on the, the students' parts and especially on all of the administration and health services and teachers. I, 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 I don't know how to express the gratitude for this, I really don't. Yeah, so thank you.
Agreed, and let me just comment also, I know there were a few different questions during the public comments. Wait, was that hours ago or days ago? But public comments, um, and I, I just wanted to address that, I know that you guys, I know that Sarah and Court and Laura, you'll be talking about uh, whether you expand on those more next time, but I actually appreciate that a lot of what you talked about just did address those questions in many ways. Um, so thank you.
Yeah, and we know it's really hard on individual families when there's things playing out there. We don't at all deny that and I think people have heard our respect for that, um, even if we're not able to change things.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, Sarah, could we turn it over to Heather?
Yeah, for attendant evaluation update.
Absolutely, I can probably do this in two minutes. Um, it is basically an update that we've done what we said we were going to do. So as we all talked about, as part of the superduty evaluation process, that is a year-long process. We planned in a January mid-year update, um, which was really um, a matter of Dr. Hunter giving us all an update, which she did through some documents and each of us touching base individually with her, really has a touch base to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're not on track for any surprises in the spring. So as we discussed, this is not a, you know, public presentation of evaluation, that happens at the end of the year. Um, but everybody has had their meeting with Dr. Hunter and made sure that everybody's on track for um, no surprises in the spring. And I think eh, from what I hear, you had some great discussions, Dr. Hunter, and.
Yeah, no, it was really great, I really had a dedicated time with you without pre-made topics that had to be covered. And I think that was really productive and valuable and just great to spend individual time with you all, so. Appreciate your time and that felt really good, yeah.
Good, I'm glad. So we can check that off of our list and, and there we go, that was my update in two minutes, as I promised.
And with that, we can move on to new business, thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Matt.
All on track.
Well, I don't know about that, but we're trying.
Um, so we have uh, the Policies Committee. Fattima, would you like to?
Yeah, so these are um, the three other policies we uh, worked on during our um, press meeting of January twenty. And so the first one involving um, exchange students and um, the committee, the subcommittee um, uh, approved to um, that's not opening up here, um, is basically uh, coming to you with a recommendation to um, approve um, these policies. And um, Dr. Hunter, I don't know um, whether you wanted to, sorry, it's not opening here. Um, yes, okay, so we um, decided to uh, leave out, um, uh, basically leave the responsibility to check the records of the foreign students or foreign exchange students to uh, the superintendent as opposed to the school committee. Um, we can uh, open it for discussion if uh, school committee members have um, any um, comments on that. Uh, but that was the recommendation um, of the subcommittee. Um, and that was also a recommendation from um, Dorothy Presser from MASC as well, who did not see the need for the school committee um, to be involved. My, um, the, the point that I brought up, I compared it with uh, the process of um, admitting uh, children of staff. We do, the school committee does uh, approve those. And for me, I saw a parallel and I didn't understand why this had to be different. Uh, so that was my, my, my question. Uh, but um, like I said, we agreed that um, we would leave out the school committee from um, this. Uh, we can open it for discussion before we move to the next one or if we can go over everything and then go back.
So I'm a little confused because it says the school committee may accept blah, blah, blah. But then, um, I mean, obviously the superintendent always verifies residences and so, yeah, I mean, but it makes sense.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just a little, yeah.
We'll double check the language and be sure we're bringing you the revised version. Fattima's right with the intent here. Fatima's right with the intent here. So, um, we'll double check and make sure for the second reading, you've got both versions so you can compare.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's one other change. Um, and that is the, the, the current one references that records have to be in the hands of the principal. You're dropping that out as well in this change.
And we moved it to the superintendent because we're doing all central registration now through my office.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So searches and interrogation of students. Dr. Hunter, I'm going to refer back to you how, um, what changes were made to this one compared to the, the previous version?
Very little, um, if anything. So this one's a highly regulated policy and obviously a, a legislated one. So I do not have any regulation of any changes and I apologize with the snow day. I don't have my notes here at home with me. So we will send you any changes from, um, from the meeting. But this one has so much backup with the law.
Yeah. And I know we didn't have any changes to this one. This moved as, as was or as is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe it was the same thing for the student complaints and grievances. Right?
Okay. And what we thought we'd do is bring you ones, even if we're not going to change them. So we can put the date on that and so it gets documented that it was reviewed.
And it's agreed there's no references on this interrogations one. Is that so?
I'm sorry?
So right now, we'll double check to see if MASC recommends any references there.
Okay.
Right. Is that what Court just asked? That's general law. I don't see any references there.
Yeah, well, well, I'm sure the MASC one probably has them.
And the only other thing that we have discussed during the, uh, this particular policy, searches and interrogation was the idea that the student once it's in school is in the custody of, um, of the school. And, and that was, um, that was the clarification of, um, of the procedures that are usually followed, um, uh, based on the policy anyway.
And that was a legal determinant, the, the custodial. So something that we wouldn't be able to change anyway.
Correct.
I think that is all for, um, the policies of committee.
And just as a, a, a confirmation of what we think is so, when it says source MASC, that means it's verbatim as opposed to reference, which means only that, that it's one of the references. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jared.
Your stamina is, uh, is unbelievable.
All good.
Thank you.
All good. All right. So this, this will be quick. I promise I'm going to make up some time. Um, so we'll start with the, um, the presentation on the CCRSD budget. Pull that up.
We got it.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, this is going to be a very similar presentation to the one that you saw in the CPS. So going to start out, it's the same timeline. So if you remember the, the January 22nd, uh, well, I'm sorry, this might be the first time that, uh, some of the, the regional members are seeing this. So January 22nd, all, all packets for the CCRSD budget were due to me, uh, from the principals and the departments. We did get ahead a little bit. But for the most part, a lot of the high school came, uh, high school ones came in that, that Friday. Between the 25th and the 29th, we had our first round of conversations with the principals and the departments. And that is still ongoing. Uh, we're going to be meeting with Mr. Mistruolo again this week. Today, I'm going to be presenting the, uh, the updated, um, budget as well as, and I don't have this in here, sort of a memo, uh, for the CCRSD capital, um, suggestions. On February 23rd, uh, Dr. Hunter and I will be, uh, presenting the recommended budget to the school committee. And on Saturday, the 27th, we have Concord's preview budget meeting. Between the 23rd and the 19th, the school committee will have, uh, that's the, the timeline for them to vote on this budget. In between that, those times, we'll be presenting a number of times to, um, the FinComs in, in both towns. We have a placeholder right now for March 9th, um, for, for the public hearing. And the, so the reason why the 19th is an important date, that is the deadline for Concord, um, to get it in. But the warrant does not close until that following Friday. April 30th, we're going to have the CCRSD budget books. Those will be available. Again, it will be later than most years. But we hope by April 30th that we'll have the most accurate information in there by then. May 25th, uh, the warrants, article motions are due in Concord and Carlisle. I'm just getting those dates. And then, um, June 13th is the Concord meeting and to be determined is Carlisle. Laura, do you want to take this slide?
Definitely. Thank you. Specific to the high school, uh, we obviously, like I said, we're trying, want to be sure we're able to bring kids back full time. That is the goal. Um, the biggest driver that won't pertain in the fall is the student supervisor piece. We do expect, um, given the availability of a vaccine, teachers will not be working remotely the way they are right now. Same as with CPS, the CARES Act should be, um, able to help support us with any COVID-related needs, specifically, um, PPE, outdoor tents, the software, which we've built a lot of it in because some of its things, some of it includes things we're going to need to sustain and long-term substitutes, which again, we're going to hope diminishes down to more of a normal, um, level for typical reasons rather than COVID reasons. We are fully replenishing the substitute lines. You'll remember, um, that we had not been using per, not been and still aren't using per DM substitutes and covering internally instead. So we need those funds back in the budget. We do want to plan for not the athletic version you heard earlier tonight, but a full program, um, of all athletics and co-curricular, much more typical than what we've had this year. Professional development lines were tweaked last, uh, August and June or July because we wanted to bring you a budget more reflective of COVID, um, opportunities. Because so many of the PD wasn't offered or only offered virtually, the costs were much lower, but we need to build those back up. And, um, software, like I said, we've been managing that back up at the district level. So we're able to know what's redundant and what's overlapping and really start to hone in on some efficiencies. Although at the same time, we've expanded our, our toolkit here. You know, basically, you know, basics like Zoom are now embedded in our, our learning environments. And that I expect needs to stay in at least through next year, you know, potentially longer, depending on how we see the positives post-COVID. So the assumption for this budget is we are coming back full time with whatever modifications. And any specific COVID-related items will come out of CARES Act. So it's important to know that going in because that's, I think, um, at FinCon, we were sort of asked about the risk management strategy of that. There is some risk there, but we feel we've got the contingency funds, um, to be able to manage any unknowns COVID-related.
So again, we are doing the complete zero-based process, um, looking at every single line. At the high school, we have over 465 lines going through all salaries, class sizes. Obviously the software and hardware, um, of the PPE, including, um, everything in stock. We're asking for quantity, um, everything. Again, memberships, professional development, all supplies, materials, legal textbooks, et cetera. It's all zero-based. It's all built from scratch and this back, this backup behind every single line. So here is our first draft, um, at, uh, at a number right now. So this report is as of, um, as of today, um, and it's by DSC 1,000 function. The increase is 900,696. That does include a decrease in debt of 159,791. So the percentage is higher than the 2.58. It's around 3.46. But we are expecting increased revenue. So that 3.46 is actually closer to around 3.28 this, uh, at this time, which is a really great start, um, for where, and we still have another two weeks before we're presenting, um, the next round of budgets to you. The way I'll do is I'll go over some of the drivers as well as some of the cost savings.
Jared, just before you do that, uh, because we're kind of coming at this a little differently than we have in the past. This is the set of numbers. Once we land on final recommendations for you in two weeks, that will drive the assessment calculations. So we didn't do that math for you today. We want to be sure it's not thought of as an operational change, one way or the other to either community. But these will be the numbers that drive those assessment calculations. So if you want to talk on that more, we can, but that's, that's the reference.
And I will go in, and I can answer questions tonight, but I will go in, uh, much more detail, obviously, on the 23rd. So right now we've identified just over 1.5 million dollars in budget drivers. Starting with the teachers, the teachers' salaries, uh, we are in contract negotiations right now. The overall increase right now we're seeing is about 4.6%. That does include an additional 0.8 special ed coordinator for approximately $80,000. So that is driving up that cost quite a bit. I wanted to point that out. The CARES Act, the CARES Act.
Talk more on what that position is?
Yep, please.
So what we've deemed, and I, I know I mentioned this at some point, COVID, um, timeline here. With all the in-district programs, we're actually proposing, and this was in the CPS budget and we neglected to highlight it to you because the percentage in dollar amount was lower. But we're proposing a full-time, um, in-district special ed coordinator to parallel the out-of-district special ed coordinator that both work, would work with Ruth. Um, given the number of programs we're building, we really need a middle layer of support. This would be a teacher equivalent in the union type of position, as is the out-of-district coordinator. Really to support the transition of kids in and out, the cohesion among programs, the vertical alignment. There's just a growing need to that. So that's, that's a proposed position that's in both budgets, actually.
Lori, is, is there one coordinator, the, the average district coordinator is the same one from?
Yeah.
All the way through. So it's the same. So it's always.
Yeah. So it'll be a parallel structure.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it possible to have, um, uh, in the future, done throughout a little more, um, uh, in-depth conversation about this specific position? And how it differs, for instance, from the, the chairs, um, of the SPED department and who does what?
Absolutely. Great questions.
Thank you.
Great. Um, so another driver this year is last year in the FY '21 budget, we carried in an offset for CARES Act of 185,116. That is not included in this budget. So that is considered an increase of 185,000. Therefore, it's identified as an offset. The retirement pension assessment, uh, that the town gives us every single year and, and we work with Kerry LaFleur on that. That right now is up 13% to $91,795. Nurses' salaries, the reason for that increase is because we are putting in the budget a 1.0 nurse for the high school next year, an additional nurse. So that would be, uh, three nurses that they have. In addition, we did budget for a nurse leader stipend. So that's why that is a driver.
Can I back that up a little bit too? For years, we've been looking at the enrollment at the high school versus the recommended, uh, ratio of nurses to students. And it's two nurses is, is under what you would, um, normally see the professional organizations recommend for 1,300 students. So this has been sitting on the discussion table for a while. In addition, what we're proposing is that Lisa Kosky serves as nurse leader in an ongoing way, K-12. So the CPS, those of you who are here for that, heard us reference the stipend for her to do that. So this, this additional nurse would allow us to both get the ratio to where it should be and also allow Lisa to take on the leadership piece and ensure enough coverage at the high school. This has been a long time discussion and COVID sort of accelerated it and gave us a trial run at a model that we're proposing continue.
Public schools take on part of that stipend?
Yes.
Okay. Does this mean that Lisa Kosky will be working exclusively with Concord Carlisle? Or will she still be continuing her work with other districts?
So she'll still continue with the K-8 population. So just the way she has been pre-K-8, actually. She'll get a stipend from the Concord, Concord side of the world so that she's, um, being funded from both. So her leadership stipend will split between the two.
Great. So next is the salaries for maintenance and custodial. If you remember, two years ago, we brought to you an increase in, uh, maintenance staff. We ended up not filling that position. When we did the FY '21 budget, I reduced that FTE. Right now, we, uh, and a number, many years ago, we had a, we had a larger maintenance staff. Since then, we've really tried to, well, we've relied on contract services and now we're trying to wean off that. Contract services are probably double the amount of, uh, a, a maintenance staff member. So in this budget includes a, uh, an additional body in addition to the, uh, 0.5 of the, the position that was budgeted in FY '20. So that is, that is the main reason why that this is up. You will see the contract services, um, in custo, for maintenance are down based on the FY '20, the old FY '21 budget, the one that was not voted because we significantly decreased that, as well as the actuals from 1918, et cetera. So we're trying again to really wean off the contracted services on things such as, um, maintenance of the grounds, uh, mulching, et cetera, that we know that our guys can take care of.
And just, I think it, that, that highlights all the new positions. And I think it's just important to note that the coordinator for special education and the maintenance position are both about better service and cost efficiency. So we're not just adding positions. There's actually some fiscal piece to those as well. The nurse leader is just, you know, more thorough service for kids and, um, COVID follow-up and any other needs that we expect long-term will continue.
Um, Jared and, and Dr. Hunter, do you know whether the, when the maintenance and custodial staff take over, um, the services of the, the contractors? Will this result in overtime and, um, is that cost included in that, um, figure?
Yeah. So believe it or not, the maintenance staff have limited overtime. Their budget is not, is not very big. Most of their overtime really is on, uh, snow. So while I did not reduce, I did level fund, um, I did level fund the, the overtime. It's, it might help it. Uh, and I think maybe in FY '23, I could drop it a little bit, but it's not a huge budget ticket.
Yeah, I actually think you'll see a little less overtime from maintenance, especially in a snowstorm like this because we'll have a whole nother person plowing. Um, and between overtime and, uh, reduction in contracted services, I think you'll see some savings there.
So equipment, the equipment line, uh, is up. So equipment, the equipment line is up almost 50%. The reason for that is, is one, music, we're budgeting music appropriately. And one of their assets here was an increase in their equipment line for replacement and new, new instruments. In addition, the radio station, which is really runs 365 days a year. It was really reliant on donations. The donations coming in is not as large as they used to be, and there are some things that they do need. So this budget includes some equipment for the radio station. And that's pretty much the main driver for the equipment. Vehicles, which is the buses, two new bus leases are in this, in this budget, just like they are in the CPS budget. Case transportation. So case transportation, we're actually seeing an increase in case, even though we saw a huge decrease at the CPS level. The reason for that is the percentage share is actually increasing 0.81% in Concord Carlisle. There was a decrease of 1.79% of the assessment in Concord. We did receive a credit this year of $86,190. So the original assessment would have been about 757,000. And instead, the, the credited assessment is $670,449. So it, it would have been a lot worse without that, without that credit.
The, the case formula is very complicated. It actually is based on usage of case two years back for ridership. I could do a whole high-level view of the formula. It actually saves us money over time and levels it out some. But, so don't, don't take that as suddenly there was this explosion on case. It's all, it's all two years back.
Jared, can you go back one? Take a minute more on software hardware. I wouldn't have predicted that. What?
Cool. So, yeah, and I think I skipped right over, didn't I? So the reason for that is, is right now I still have a placeholder in. For the most part, it's going to be an increase. I think that could go down a little bit. But a lot of the, and you're going to see it in the budget savings. A lot of the softwares are, were in the curriculum textbook lines. So those lines are now, the software is parted out in their, its own line. So in the past, again, it was combined. So it's just the way that I'm showing it this year. I have about 50 expense categories. Software hardware is one of them. But it's all of, again, we separated everything out. So while it's probably a little bit of an increase due to, you know, due to all the COVID software that we're now using, including Zoom, Zoom is budgeted at the high school. That, that's the reason for that, that big increase. And what we can do is, like I said, I have everything backed up. We can show you sort of what, what is new and what is not. And that number would come down after what you, if you're comparing it to the curriculum textbook lines.
Good. Let's make the time to do that. Thank you.
Yep.
And Jared, on that note, you just mentioned Zoom. Are there other things that, John, I think you've mentioned a couple, but other things that fell under this year's special expenses, you know? CEF funded Zoom for us this year. We need to budget for it next year. Other things that were kind of out of special monies this year, whether it's CARES Act or some other funding, that then we have to budget for, for next year. So those things are entering the budget for the first time, even if we did them this year.
Right. Why don't I, instead of, and Laurie may know, instead of guessing, I do have a list and I'll make sure I bring that on the 23rd. What is new for this year? I don't think it's.
It's a lot of smaller ticket items that, nothing as wide-scale as Zoom, at least at the high school. I mean, at the elementary, yes, but at, at the high school Zoom. What we did see, and this is why we're centralizing it now, is the departments all really dug in and got creative and found all sorts of tools and options. And that's been great, but we also know we have redundancies and we could get cost efficiencies of scale in some cases. And that's why we're pulling it all up to the central office level so that we can maximize any efficiencies of scale and, and really do, do right by the cost. So more to come, but nothing, nothing as broad-scale as Zoom, but other, other platforms across different departments.
And again, a lot of these things might be covered by federal money.
Yeah.
We just don't know. The one other thing is, like Court, I, or like Heather, excuse me. I'd like to see like a full review of the CARES Act versus the budget in FY21 as much as we can. Just.
Yep.
That will be, and I can, it probably would be part of the budget conversation. But again, we have to, there's so much detail that we have to provide.
Oh, yeah.
Not only, you know, you know, itemize everything. We have to show them, you know, why it's COVID-related, PO numbers, et cetera. So, yeah, we can certainly get that. A lot of it is obviously PPE, but a lot of it is, you know, the long-term subs. That, that, that's a big, big part of it.
Yeah.
The salary support staff, the FTEs are the same. I know that that number jumps out, but it's a 3.32% increase. For some reason, for the past two years, it's been a particular staff member that I've under-budgeted. And once again, they happened to me again, and it's a mistake on my end and I own that. Not a huge amount, but that's why it's becoming a, because we have, most of our support staff members that work district-wide are split, sometimes I mess up. And that this one's, it's not, it's not an astronomical amount, but it's enough to be a, be a budget driver. And I wanted to show that. Did I list case twice? Nope, I did. Sorry about that. Supplies and materials, we decreased quite a bit last year. So this is just getting some of that back. And then contract services, again, just increasing it, not all maintenance. It's many different things make up the contract services. So overall, I know that even though I listed case transportation twice, I do know that this number is correct. We had about 1.5 million in budget drivers.
And just a reminder that we're still working. This is your preliminary view and we'll be bringing a tight recommendation in two weeks.
So we've identified right now just over 656,000 in cost savings. Once again, special education tuitions are coming in under. The net decrease is 223,000. Of that, special ed tuitions are down 210, and then there's a circuit breaker. So circuit breaker, we're expecting about $12,450 less than we budgeted for in FY22 and 21. Debt is going down 3.67%. Insurance, so not just health insurance, but insurance is going down. The health insurance line is going down about $100,000. We're still working with that number, but we expect a very modest increase based on what was budgeted last year. We're looking at around 3% to 5%, which is excellent. School choice and charter, those, those are going down based on what we're assessed right now. So that's a nice little budget savings of 81,000 plus. Salaries, assistant tutors, that line's going down 62,000. The FTEs are about 3.67 less than what was budgeted in FY21. So all the staff that are there currently now are budgeted appropriately. We just had some, some savings through, through that. And then the curriculum textbook lines is going down 33,000.
I have a question asked, Dr. Hunter, about charter and so at school choice. I know you mentioned previously some efforts to try and get some of our students who have gone to private schools back into district. Are we, are we seeing the same efforts to these families that are going to school choice and charter?
I would say probably not, and I wouldn't say in any way do we go out recruiting them. We just, if we have relationships with families, we like to encourage, you know, them to use, use what we can offer. Knowing a little bit about some of who those families are, I think they often make the choice for very specific reasons. And some of which just is, are, are things that, you know, are structurally not things we can offer or a family situation, et cetera. So we're always looking, we do get access to the names through the state so that we have them. But we try to be respectful that there's often a reason for that choice. So it's a little bit of both, depending on what the history is there and if, what we know for rationale. Our numbers are actually very, very low for charter and school choice. Most, you know, other districts have a bigger issue where kids are looking for those other settings. Our, our numbers are very, very low.
A quick question on the curriculum and textbooks. If that's going down 41%, is that just a timing thing? That's a big drop.
Well, it's, it's because a lot of that was software that has now moved to the software line.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay.
That number might keep shifting a little bit, too, as we work through the software piece, which is still, still happening.
Okay, that makes sense.
Wait, does that mean then that we're not, is it just we're moving the funds? Or does it represent also like a decrease in the purchasing of traditional textbooks and curriculum? Yeah, so we'd been carrying, oh, I'll try. The, you know, textbooks are going on to software platforms, obviously. Anything that is available, Kristin made a really great rule for us to be able to budget this across the board consistently. Anything that's available in a hard copy textbook, but we buy it in electronic form, we still put in the textbook line. So we've been tracking textbooks, whether we buy them digitally or otherwise through this line. Those are remaining, for the most part, in the textbook line. It's the curriculum instructional software. And if we bring you a list of names of titles of platforms, you'll see what the difference is, I think. Those are more tools for kids to use versus the content that's in the textbooks. And that's what we're moving around, trying to get back up to a centralized level is the.
So like, yeah, I've talked, like, I've, I've talked with Kristin about some of that stuff. So like, I, but are we still buying, like, are, are kids still, like, reading books? Like, I get a book that I touch with paper? Or like, are you reading Catcher in the Rye digitally where you're like?
We buy a lot of paperback text. The English teachers feel really strongly about hard copy experience for kids, so. In fact, you're going to see there's some increases along the way in the line items. If you go into the English sections, we're replacing, you know, novels and things like that. Closing School on a Dime last year, you know, meant some, we didn't get all our books back. So we're replacing some, we're buying new titles, all of that. But yeah, that's a passion, passion of theirs, for sure.
Cool. So right now, just showing the offsets, and I'll go into grants and other things at the 20, on the 23rd. The IDEA, we get about 380,000 that we offset just tuitions for. And then the circuit breaker, again, if it's going down, that's a good thing. That means it's less tuition, you're building programs, you're doing, bringing kids back. It's, it's, it's better for, better for the kids. So we're expecting at this time, based on about 906,000 for eligible costs, about a $588, $821 to be precise reimbursement. So here's the breakdown of the FY22 special education. We, most of our tuitions are in the non-public, some out-of-state ones, and then collaborative. By rule, we can prepay up to three months worth of tuition, but you can pay the full amount of collaboratives, which we've done in the past. And then you see here is the offsets. Circuit breaker offset last year was 601,271. So as of today, here's what we're projecting for revenues to offset the budget. Significant increase, well, 3.5, I think it was 3.5%, but it's, it's a nice number right there in chapter 70.
Jared, can you just mention where we're getting these numbers from the state level?
So this is, the chapter 70 was from the governor's budget. The chapter 71 number that they showed is actually, I'm not using that number. I actually think we're going to be getting more than the first one. The reason for that is, is based on our end-of-year report, and they're still going through that. So I, I took a little bit of a risk and put 675,000 instead of the approximately, I think it's around the 617 that they had in the governor's budget. I do anticipate that to, to go up. So, yeah, we, this is pretty much straight from the governor's budget that came out on the 27th, except for that chapter 71 number. Charter school reimbursements, the interest, so that was a big hit. But, so we're expecting about $80,000 less than budgeted in FY21. So you have to make that revenue back up. And then there's some miscellaneous revenue that we get, donations, et cetera, that can offset, offset the budget. And then optimist here, thinking that maybe we'll get some rental facilities next year. And, you know, 20,000 isn't potentially something that we can't get. So, so our total, right now, revenue projections, that these are the ones that specifically offset the assessments, is about 3.6 million, which is, you know, 180,000 higher than FY21.
Jared?
Yes.
The, the rental, is that net or gross?
That'd be net.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You know, it assumes we eventually let the public back in the building. Might be a half, half a year, you know, that sort of thing. Jared, can you remind us just of E and D and circuit breaker and all of those? Because that all feeds into this discussion.
So right now, we have, so, as you know, circuit breaker is offset in the general fund budget. I am anticipating, as of 2/9, to be able to carry over what we received in chapter 71, I mean, chap, in circuit breaker for FY21, to have it as a contingency next year. E and D excess and deficiency, we're going to be right at that 4.99, give or take percent. In the budget, we do have an offset of $300,000. So it's, it's a, they call it a reserve to reduce amount. So that money actually does not mean that it's coming out of the 4.99. When you budget this, we can essentially go over the E and D amount by 300,000. That is reserved to reduce the next year's budget, and we can carry, you know, up to 5%. When I started here, the E and D amount was more than double. You know, it's, it's not good practice to have that much in there, but in a situation like ours.
As a revenue source.
As a revenue source. But in a situation like ours right now, and we have any healthy E and D, and we have healthy other reserves, it's not something I'm sweating.
So just a couple of follow-ups to that. One is that it allows us, because our reserves are healthy, it allows us to take some risks in the budget, knowing we have contingencies. So you'll hear us keep kind of referencing risk. And I guess that's the theme is, you know, some risk management strategy. But even FY21, we're running really strong right now because things are going as budgeted or better. And we came into the, from the closure with some reserves. So just, I think it's time for us to say out loud that you're going to be at 5% in E and D, and we're going to bring you a list of ways to manage that, including, I want to say returning money to each town, but it isn't actually that simple if we have excess left at the end of FY21. So there's a whole, whole big discussion to have. So there's a whole, whole big discussion to have there if there's one or two hundred thousand dollars left beyond what we can. Use in D and E and D. It's not like both communities just get their cash back. It's gotta become. Part of the build for twenty two. It's a whole lesson in regional finance. Um, and then we have a couple other options we can put on the table for you to consider that would be viable. And want to give you choice if we if we land there. We're 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 thinking we could. So I'd rather have that conversation earlier and then keep you posted. As the spring goes on.
Jared, uh, reserve to reduce, uh, anticipates expenditure of that three hundred. Is that correct?
So this current fiscal year FY twenty one. When you voted the budget this summer, you had a, you budgeted three hundred thousand. So that was reserved. Out of our E and D. So when we went to certify it, that was already. Taken off the top, uh, and then you can still have five percent under than that. If we did not use E and D as a revenue source. When you voted the budget, then that that technically would have gone back to the towns. Or most likely the D O R would have had us, uh, reduce the budget with that amount. And it's. You do not want to land. With unless your planned surplus. Auditors and D O R do not look favorably on that. You always want to somehow reduce next year's budget if it's a region with that, um. With that money in that in a town on like CPS budget, that will go right to this free cash. So that's easier. That goes right back. Not as simple with the region.
Thank you.
Dr. Hunter, um, you will be with the Conquer FinCom Thursday at eight. I'm sure they'll be looking for that number for Concord. Do you have that handy or?
The end of year, what we might have or?
No, 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 I'm sorry. The assessment for Concord.
Yeah, we we do have, and actually we're debating presentation of it because. Some of the slides we've had in the past make me worry that sometimes it gets confused as an operational increase. So we'll bring the total. Obviously, these are rough numbers at this point, not solid and finished, but we'll show what, you know, uh, Concord's portion of that will be. Based on the population.
Right, because their guideline does take that into.
It does, and I I hope, and I know they're here, so I'm not talking around them, I'm talking to them too. You know, I I think we want to just be sure we're not considering. The assessment change and enrollment factor as part of the operational increase. So yes, we will have the numbers. But we do want to have that conversation.
Do any other school committee members have any questions or comments? I do know we have a couple of members from Concord and Carlisle FinComs. And while everyone's getting their own presentations through this process. If if anyone, Christine Reynolds, if you have.
Yep, thank you. No, I just, I just wanted to, um, make sure that the committee was aware. So we had voted a preliminary guideline on. The high school of just about eight hundred thousand. And, um, that includes, that's meant to include the the shift. The costs associated with the shift in the enrollment. So that's the number that our preliminary guideline was. Do I compare that to the nine hundred thousand, Dr. Hunter, or is are those two not apples to apples?
Well, Jared, answer that.
Yeah, not apples to apples.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
That includes the debt. But then on the assessment side, you also need to. When we calculate the assessments, we're also calculating the increased additional revenue that we're getting, you know, from the state.
Right, okay. And that's not, is that net, that's not yet netted into the numbers that you're that you're showing?
I only showed the general fund.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared.
More to come in two weeks.
To seen. Continuing iterations and. Keeping up this conversation. I think then we can. Proceed to the capital conversation.
How would you like me to present this? Uh, I can show the memo or have a conversation?
Oh, so.
Okay, so. We've been thinking, um, about, you know, capital needs at the high school, that, you know, the the building isn't getting any younger. So a a couple of things that we, uh, we thought about. In no particular order. The amenities building, this is a conversation.
A little bigger so we can all see it.
How's that?
Better, thank you.
Great. So here's just a brief list of possible anticipated capital, uh, projects. Uh, one is the amenities building. So if you remember back in two thousand nineteen, Gail did complete a study and a conceptual layout. For that facility, um, but we will need to have a detailed design. In order to go before the board to get a a fifty percent capacity waiver. So that's something that's still. Still off there that, um.
Jared, I'm gonna rewind a little just because we have so many new committee members, um, the the high school campus has had, uh, a punt, a list of outstanding projects. Not many in nature, but they're outstanding and continue to be. Um, one of the, one of the few remaining projects that were originally, was originally talked about when the building opened and CC at play in the. Town collaborated to do the fields and all of that was this amenities building, which really is about restrooms. At, um, Memorial Field. And the challenge here is that the state requires that you build restrooms to the maximum capacity of the stadium, despite how often it's used. So with the code, actually, when you play it out, would require forty four bathroom facilities down there. Our understanding is that they are, they can waive that to half, half. If we get a design submitted, um, we have yet to hear of anyone with success at getting less than half. And obviously, there's, the reason this is set fairly dormant is because it feels excessive for what it is and. We use portable restrooms to make do when the, you know, activities are going on down there or the sports seasons are are happening. But it still sits out there as an unresolved issue. So we're just putting it back on the radar for discussion, um. And as Jared mentioned, possibly it would be worth considering getting the design done so we can submit it to the state for the waiver. And at least know what we're building to. So that's that story.
We've discussed this before, but thank you for giving us the history. One, one thing I'm not sure we've discussed is. If we did put in the, uh, the plan seeking the, uh, the variance. Does that start a clock to run on actually executing?
Not that I'm aware of, but we would want to be sure of that.
That'd be, I I doubt it, but it'd be a worthy question.
Yeah, I doubt it too. That has, yeah, but we would certainly want to confirm that.
So and maybe Gail knows if they've brought others before, uh, state code authorities. Thank you.
Dr. Hunter, I would like to try to tackle this from my legislative, uh, approach. And I think we should contact Tammy Gavere. And discuss with her about filing a bill to amend this because it's it's an incredible hardship on high schools. Nobody needs that size. Restroom facility.
That's a great idea, Cynthia.
And I I just, you know, I cannot even think of spending eight hundred thousand dollars when we can spend probably. Under a hundred, if not under fifty perhaps. So. I I dug around and maybe somebody filed legislation. Pre-COVID and it probably just fell on the ground. And I I don't off the top of my head know the legislative, uh, schedule. And I'd also, again, reach out to the select board with assistance on this to. Save both of our towns, you know, and the Carlisle Select Board. Assistance with, um. Lobbying our state reps and state senate.
Great idea. All right, Jared, on to the next thing.
So another thing that is going to have to be done at some point is repaving of the access road. Back in two thousand and eighteen, Gail did a campus usability study in that at the current, at the, at that time. They estimated the cost to be about seven hundred and ninety thousand. So that's something that we did identify because it's gonna need to be done at some point.
Again, leftover that, um, didn't get finished in the building project.
So other possible needs, um, is a is a campus tractor, believe it or not, or a Kubota. This would actually pay for itself. With, you know, the amount of, you know, work that we can do with this, with plowing and seeding and mowing, et cetera. So we put that on there. I also put on tennis court resurfing, uh, resurfacing. I do think this would be under twenty five thousand, I'm thinking around twenty. We did, um. We did plan to pay this out of the athletic revolving account. There's no timetable on this, not even that this summer. Uh, but I just, I did mention this at one point, I even think last summer. And I just wanted to, uh, just keep that on your radar. I also wanted to talk about a little bit of about the stabilization fund and how that works. So back in nineteen ninety one, the town did establish a. Regional, uh, capital project stabilization account. There, um, the, so basically, the way that that would work. Is during the budget process, the school committee can, um, vote an amount. To be put in the this account for future capital costs. Another way that this can happen, and we actually emailed the D O R today just to confirm. Is that if we have a surplus at the end of the year and it's before June thirtieth. Can the school committee vote to transfer in a particular surplus amount into this account to be used for capital purposes? I believe that that is the case. We wanted to confirm that. So basically, what they would do is if you had a E and D balance of, say, one point seven million. And I told you in June that we were having a surplus. And you wanted to vote to increase our budget using E and D. That would then be moved over to this stabilization account to be used on capital purchases. Then the excess would then go into. The E and D. Sort of offsetting it. So you can't, so to back up, I, you can't vote general fund money after the fact. To go into the stabilization account, but you can use E and D money. And so you would increase the budget and move that over. That's how, and we'll get some wording from D O R just to clarify that. But it's a really good tool to have, not a lot of districts, some do, a lot don't. But if if if, you know, we're right now that we're in a situation that we're in and we're tracking well. It it it's it's a good way to help offset future costs to the community by putting monies in to this account. Uh, and not having to to go back to them for capital costs.
Jared, I like the idea of these, especially with a couple of big things that. For those who watched the committee for a while, at least, these big ones we've been looking at for years, every year, let's do this, and we can't yet. Um, anyway, a stabilization fund, how specific does it have to be? Am I right that it has to be named for a specific purpose? But how specific does that have to be?
Yeah, I, so I want to say not as, not as specific as, say, a town meeting. Vote for capital such as the one for CPS.
Right.
I think that you can. Transfer money over. For it to sit there to be used on capital purchases. And the definition of a capital purchase. Is usually something over twenty five thousand that has a shelf life of over five years. That's sort of the definition. So, you know, um. A Kubota, um, you know, paving, et cetera. Obviously, you couldn't use that on salaries or something like that, or even computers, that that wouldn't even be a great use of that. So, and I'll get, I'll get language on that. I don't think it's as specific as the the capital budget of the, under the, um, the town.
Okay, so we wouldn't likely, at least, we wouldn't necessarily have to have either an amenities building stabilization fund or a repaving fund. We could have a campus, you know, capital improvements stabilization fund that could cover in. Any be used towards any of these.
That is my understanding, and I'll again clarify that.
Okay, great, thanks.
And Jared, what is the status of the project to repair the baseball softball infield?
Good question. So we got, I actually got notified on Monday, or it might have been even Friday. That they are ready to, um. They have all the bid documents ready, so they're gonna send those over for us to to review, and then it should be out on the street. Hopefully by the end of vacation week, if not sooner. So we can see what sort of. We anticipated to use athletic revolving accounts for that because we didn't expect the cost to be something that we couldn't afford out of that with the surplus in there. Um, so getting the bids out will allow us to make that decision.
And what's the, what's the expected cost?
We thought under, well, under fifty thousand.
Okay.
Expecting some financial support from youth softball, correct, Jared?
So we got thirty five thousand from them. Let me stop sharing my screen. And that is specifically for, um. Just have that. I want to say it was for the infield.
Yeah, we've got a lot of hard compacted soil there on some of those infield and they're just not friendly to to players. Plus the, some drainage issues, so.
So what is, that's the next question, what is the status of the drainage issues?
So that's the work that's been getting looked at, correct, Jared?
So it's part of this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I I think from what I heard, the drainage issues did. Cause some of the issues with the tennis courts. Degraded, and we should have had them. And I do know, um. Russ was, Russ was plowing all night, so we sent them home. He 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 would have been here. Him and and Tim Shudo, uh, the assistant facilities manager, especially Tim. Know these fields like the back of their hand. Um, so if you have specific questions, I apologize that I I don't know all of them. I can certainly get those answered.
Maybe if we could get a little report on what the overall plan is for that area. And what we expect the, we expect these repairs. Well, I would hope that the. Baseball softball infield repairs would be of long term. We wouldn't have to do that again. But how long we would expect the tennis court to last is a ten years, you know, um, kind of, I don't know. And then maybe a little more information on the drainage.
Sure, yeah.
That would be great.
And and just to point out too, so that the, um, youth baseball and softball, they're making a donation of about forty five thousand. Uh, for general improvements in the baseball and softball, softball areas of the lower fields. These include turf on the batting cages and bullpen areas, fencing, backstop padding. And dugout upgrades. Uh, they also donating a gator to replace the one that they have, which is over twenty years old.
What's that?
It's it's their golf cart.
Have we accepted that gift yet?
Has not come in yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a very generous offer that we're grateful for. So that's the high level view of where we are with C C H S capital in the campus. For more discussion, we thought we'd just get it all queued up tonight with what the list looks like and what the options are.
And I, so the, um, the Concord Town Meeting Preview Meeting, what, what do they expect us to have ready?
Whatever we have ready.
So it's not a formal, you have to have all your word articles.
No, we almost never do, actually. Well, we'll talk about what we're working on. And sometimes we're farther along than others, but it's always at the beginning of December and we often don't have a voted budget. So I think the same will kind of play out here.
Especially September 5th last year.
Yeah.
Good. 27?
Yep, Saturday morning. Via Zoom, which is a nice Saturday morning treat, I guess.
So, one more thing not to continue to be, so for Gail, what they're doing too is, so obviously we hired Gail to perform updates on the infield surfaces that includes the field draining and replacement of the infield mix. So there's a, there's a, it's, it's a wide range of things that they're working on, working on. God, it's late. Can't talk. Sorry.
We all feel it.
Sorry, did I say that out loud? Hey, tongue tied.
No more questions on capital?
And if you have more, feel free, please email me. And I apologize, I wasn't able to answer everything.
No, it's a good start.
I know, yeah. That's why we, that's why we have many meetings.
Sarah, I'll move on with this motion if you wish.
Yep, to the action item, yep.
So, item nine, I move that Concord and Concord-Carla School Committees vote to approve the following staff request to enroll her daughter in Concord Public Schools, Concord-Carla Regional School District for the 2021-2022 school year, and the tuition be waived. Kelly Pierce, teacher at Thoreau, daughter to enroll in kindergarten at Willard. That's the end of the motion. Is there a second?
Second for both?
I would note that we are making a continuing commitment to this family with this. Sarah, if you want to ask for the roll?
Roll call, please.
Anderson, aye for both.
Booth, aye for both?
Aye for both.
Miss Dan, aye for both?
Mostafi for region.
Randy for both.
Wilson for region, thank you.
I'll note that Kelly Pierce has been a longtime wonderful performer in the schools. Pleased to, pleased to support her daughter. I move that the regional school committee meeting be adjourned and that the Concord School Committee will remain in session.
Second?
Roll call?
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye?
Cat, aye.
Miss Dan, aye?
Mostafi, aye. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, stay, stay safe.
Good night, we're jealous of you.
Thank you.
Vacation, yep.
Take good care. Concord, I want to ask us to press on without a break for a few minutes. This is not the first conversation we will have, excuse me, not the last conversation we'll have on the matter of CPS capital, but rather the first one where we're going to introduce recommendations that might fall within the town manager's side of his capital budget allocated to the Concord Schools. Jared?
Thank you. Can you all see that? Should I?
A little bit more, that's good.
How's that?
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so this current request again falls under the, the town manager's budget. I did reach out to Carrie last week and tried to confirm the 900,000. They're still, we're hoping that that's going to be the case. She could not 100% confirm that yet, but we're going to use that number right now. To back up a little bit, the FY21 capital is ongoing. So we are, we have, the biggest thing in the FY21 capital is the ERUs at the Alcott School. Those will be done this summer. And so that's, that's the, the main capital piece for FY21. We'll be putting out those bids any day now. We have them pretty much ready.
Can I ask an embarrassing question?
What, energy recovery unit?
Great, thanks.
Don't be embarrassed, we should.
Yeah. I just learned it too. So, as you can see, our, our biggest ask for, for FY22 is the continued plan of the ERUs at Thoreau. That would be done in the summer of 2022. So that will be 665,000. We are starting a carpet and tile replacement in all the schools, but we're, we're, we're taking a look right now and doing some patchwork and we're prioritizing and we don't necessarily know which, we don't have priorities yet. So we have some patching to do to get us through next year, and that's with the 25,000, and then a full sort of redo on some of the schools for the future years.
Jared, I assume tile lasts longer than carpet?
Correct, so that's why we were looking into maybe doing tile only.
And then I assume maintenance wise, it's better, easier. And I think some of the justification for carpet in the past has been, it's, acoustically, it's a much better environment, but I think the tile has come a long way to match it, or am I? This is.
Yeah, and I think there's other options to work with sound that didn't exist before. So we're going to, we'll do all that work because you're right, it's, it's rare to put carpet in a, a new school. And every time anybody ever replaces carpet, they always have this discussion, so I'm in agreement.
Thanks.
Does this replacement happen every certain number of years, or how, how is it determined?
Usually the rugs last anywhere from five on a very low end to 10 plus, but some of the threads are, are starting to get loose and then, you know, at elementary school and a kiddo starts seeing those, I would start pulling it. And that's what we're seeing in some of the, some of the elementary schools. Alcott, we've had tile issues since I've been there. I, I just don't think that they were installed correctly. We've contained it. We had a big project there two summers ago. But that's something that we, we need to continue to take a look at. But it's, you're always going to have some, some patchwork to do. I don't think these are lasting any less time than we thought. We just, it's, it's time to start doing some work on them. Great, so now with the Alcott School, so looking ahead, new condensing boiler and controls, a big project for FY23, and some sidewalk repairs. At Thoreau, so we, we put aside 25,000 in this budget to get the conversation going again for the integrated playground at the Thoreau, at Thoreau. I know that the, the, it's a CEF, are going to be helping with, with these costs. We don't, I, I, we got to get a design to figure out how much this will cost. I don't think it's going to be in the, even close to the ballpark that we have at our preschool right now. But we wanted to at least get something in there to, to get the conversation going again. We do have summer school at Thoreau this summer, and that might, we need to have a conversation with, with Ms. Charles.
So the PTG has about 70,000 that they have.
The PTG has a lot of money for this.
They still have it, Alexa. And we're excited because the needs, needs now really are driving towards making sure that whatever playground gets installed will really act, allow access for the integrated programs that are over there now. So the delay actually proved to be a positive, but yeah, there's some money to work with. We're going to need, right now, we just need some manpower to get going on it, but we're excited. It's going to be a fun project.
Great.
So, when you say, so the 25,000 would be that between the two amounts of money you would be able to go ahead and execute? Or just a little?
We need to figure if there's, that's a good question. It depends on the design that we come up with and the big picture vision. It could mean we could phase in something to get started and we don't have any of those answers yet. But we also wanted to be sure we had adequate money to at least have some conversation about what to do next. More to come.
Because the only other thing I'll offer is that the CPC funded that playground at the Ripley School or at the, whatever you want to call it, Concord Children's Center, formerly Concord Children's Center, but, or part of it, I'm sorry, it was a piece of.
And that could be an option down the road, especially if we're doing a phasing in and get a design put together. You know, a lot of cost is, I've actually built playgrounds in my past and built one. You know, a, a lot of cost is about the materials you choose. And with the accessibility, you can do the poured rubber like we have at Ripley, which is very, very expensive. And a lot of it is how much of that you do and what other options you have. And I think we got a lot of discussion to have about what we, what we want this, and need this playground to be, so.
And it seems like it's far off, but you know, the August is the start for CPC, and it's not really that far away, actually.
Okay, yeah, you know, it'll be, the rate time goes right now, it'll be here before we know it.
It might be something you consider.
Good point.
Great. Willard, so nothing in FY22. An RTU installation replacement or rooftop unit, that's RTU. So, and then some walkway repairs and some lighting, exterior lighting that's been on the list for a while that we'd like to get to in FY23. At the PB and Sandborne, the standard 50,000 reserved for light and safety that we've had in there. No one jinxed that? No one said anything? Okay, so next is Ripley. So we've been, and, and more Russ has been in contact with Kate Hanley regarding the Green Communities Grant to replace four rooftop unit pods. That 75,000, we have to spend, so the, the Green Communities would pay for pretty much the entire project except for the design. So this 75,000 would be for the design costs. And we, after a meeting we had with her last week, we feel, we feel confident that, you know, that we could, we could potentially get this grant.
So the question sounded like it was still about, the town obviously has to decide its priority and it is considering, you know, coming back to help support the schools because it's been a couple of years. But she had not firmed up exactly whether it would be a FY22 or 23 project, so we need more feedback from her. But it did, the timing was great because it allowed us to rework this a little to allocate funds in case it is an FY22 project. So we should hear more from her shortly, I think. It was an exciting, we've been kind of waiting for a partnership on Ripley with the Green Communities, so it was a good conversation.
And what would be the cost of the project that the grant would fund approximately?
About 100,000, I think, Jared, is what I recall.
Okay. I thought it was a little more, but yeah, that sounds, yeah, ballpark.
And, and it's a big energy yield, so Kate loves her data of energy usage and getting some progress on Ripley would help her overall town building numbers pretty quickly.
8% or something it would, it would get her to or something like that, I remember. Yeah. So the next is pushing out to FY24 is a boiler replacement. One of the things we did have conversations about would be potentially moving the boiler, keeping the Sandborne boiler and moving that over. So that's a discussion that we, we're going to continue to have. It's the nicest room in Sandborne and we'll bring it over to Ripley. Next is, so a big project we're putting out in FY25 would be the domestic water and heating pipe replacement. Most of this cost truthfully would be the asbestos abatement. It would be astronomical cost. So we put a figure in of 850,000 right now for that. It's sort of a ballpark of what we think right now. Then some little things, exterior door replacement at the Ripley is, is definitely needed. We need some, some paving and, and parking lot in the sidewalk work at Ripley. We need, and we're going to be working with the town on this, and a big shout out to them. They have been amazing. They said that they would work with us on this. So the 10,000 would be to fix some potholes and then the 175,000 would be to repave the existing parking lot in that sidewalk that runs to the side of the building all the way to that access road and that street. And then replacements, replacement of flooring is needed at the Ripley. And then some exterior repairs and painting. At Knox Trail, this is actually kind of cool. I don't know if I can click on this. Oh, I can. So one of the things that we are requesting, I'd love to get it sooner, would be a, a bus roof snow sweep. So the bus drivers would drive through this when there's snow on the roof. You know, they, they wouldn't have to get a shovel and, and what they've been doing now is pushing the snow off with a shovel or a broom. They just drive right through this. It's, it's, it's a pretty cool thing. I'd love to get it beforehand, but we have that on the capital, capital. And then last but not least, in FY24, sewer system install connection. Very aging, 1957 septic system.
Jared, in ma, in, in general, regarding the Knox Trail facility, it's in view, so we don't really anticipate any cost to do any repairs to it. But going forward, would that be the school's responsibility or the town's?
I think, well, it is, it is a town or a building used by the schools. I think it's sort of like Ripley. I think that would be the schools, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laurie, I think it probably would. I, I would say at least the depot, maybe not necessarily the building, but the depot, I would think it would be. And I don't see any huge projects that would need to be done there to that building, just because it's a garage, pretty much.
Right, it's just the, probably the two things, electric, electrification of the fleet and making those adjustments, and then the water issue, right?
Actually, both of those are being actively worked on, partly because of the Warren article. Ryan Folds sponsored a town meeting for, to build up the infrastructure for the electric buses. And yes, we still have no viable water source out at the depot despite different efforts of different kinds. So actually, the town is working very much with us on that, so I think that partly answers your question. When they heard we were starting to think we wanted to get going on it, we immediately got connected with Alan and were told that he would be the big driver to the project. So I think that's a good hint of what the answer is. And so there's actually, there's money already available for both because the article that initially funded, was it at the initial article or a follow-up? It was the initial article for the depot, still has $300,000 in it, waiting to be used to fix the water problem. I will not ever share with you my Acton Water meeting experience of last spring. It wasn't very pleasant. It was a good college try on our part, but.
Yeah.
Some, some memories don't go away quickly. And then he's helping us also work on the, the money now we have for infrastructure buildup. And when the second VW grant comes up, we can apply for more buses. So, so that's been exciting, that that's all getting some momentum with town, very much town involvement and even leadership.
Yep. So I think what we can do is, you know, after talking to Alan, is we can go ahead with at least a design. So we have been, you know, we're going to be working with Niche and maybe Weston and Sampson. And we're going to have another follow-up conversation with Alan before that. He's got some connections at both places. So that is something that will be happening. So, um, that is something that will be happening. Probably we'll be getting this started right after vacation.
They can't forget about it because they've all moved into that building over there while town, townhouse is in renovation. So it's right there reminding them.
So we certainly are going to, uh, spend more time on this. Um, I don't know if I speak for everybody, uh, Jared and Laurie. Would you send, uh, copies of your documents to us that were not linked in the agenda?
We got, again, the remote work today. Aaron couldn't get to the agenda.
No problem, no problem at all. I think it'd be, be helpful. Uh, other questions or comments on this? We know we're going to come back to it. Laurie, thanks for, uh, hanging in so long and Jared, long, long night. Um, for those of us who, uh, took in the meeting, uh, as attendees, thank you for sticking with us. Um, most of all to my colleagues, uh, this is, uh, not, not easy and not, not quick stuff by any means, uh, but we're well on our way now with both budgets. And delighted FinComs were here tonight as well. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
And do we, do we have a second?
Enthusiastic.
Enthusiastic second.
Enthusiastic second. Okay. With energy remaining, yes. Okay. And a roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Out, I.
Miss Dan, I.
Rainie.
Thank you all. Take care and for those people who will be off on a February break, uh, for a few days, uh, well deserved. Take care, be safe. We'll see you soon. Good night all.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.